Like to say good evening to everyone. And at this time, I'd like to go ahead and get started with our board norms and protocols. We agreed to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, to continually self-check, to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And with that being said, we will now have our board clerk do the roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, present.
Stacy Agar. Dr. Agar.
You're on mute. She's not here. Could I get a motion that we approve our regular agenda, please?
Madam President, this is Dr. Nguyen. I have a motion to add a discussion item before the executive session to determine at least one date, and if needed, a second date for future budget workshop.
Thank you. Could I get a seconded, please? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we add a discussion item to our agenda to determine a date for our budget workshop. Are there any questions? Could you do a roll call? Yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead and take care of this motion.
Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Agar.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready for... Do we have any community comments?
I'd love to approve the agenda. I was going to suggest that you probably also need to amend the agenda to add a topic for the board to discuss the board clerk's position.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add another topic, which is for the board clerk's position. Are there any questions?
Greg, would that be an executive session?
I don't think so. It's just to talk about the position generally, not to talk about a specific individual or item. So I don't think there's a rationale for it to be an executive.
Okay.
Thank you. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Agar.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So do we have any community comments?
We'll need to vote on the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion that we accept the agenda as it has been amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda as it is amended. Ready for questions? Okay, could we have roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Agar.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So Susan, there are no community comments, am I correct?
No, no comments.
Okay, thank you. We're now ready for board updates. Starting with the Neighborhood Revitalization Act presentation. Is Catherine Qatar here?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
That came up quickly, so I'm ready. How are you all doing?
Fine, thank you.
Great. I am going to share my screen, and if you all can let me know when... That would be excellent. Okay, all right. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. My name is Catherine Carter. I'm Director of Economic Development for the Unified Government. This is a program, and I think many of you have probably seen this and voted on it before. The Neighborhood Revitalization Program is actually a program that's been in place since 1999. And every three years, we go through the process of updating it, making sure that it is doing what it's supposed to do. And what that is, is to actually promote revitalization through rehabilitation and new construction throughout the city. Kind of focusing on different areas. And what, you know, why I'm coming to you all and giving you this presentation tonight is that basically what we do is have all jurisdictions that are affected. So this would be the school districts, the community college, provide an inter-local agreement that says, yes, this all makes sense. You know, UG, go forth and administer this process for the next three years. So that is what has happened since 1999. And so I'm going to just give a brief overview of what the program does. And then I'm going to go through, we are suggesting a few changes. So those are what I want to specifically draw your attention to tonight. So just for those of you who are new, and specifically to the viewing public, just want to kind of give a brief explanation of how this mechanically works. So this is a tax rebate program. So folks who have applied, they will pay their entire taxes. So we ensure that all taxes are being paid. And then they get a rebate for what is called the increment. So what that means is you can see this graph here below, if you can see my cursor. So kind of day one, someone applies, they have, they just bought a house. It needs a lot of work. And so what they do is they apply for the NRA program. That sets the value at what they are paying their current taxes at. So that will never decrease. So they will always stick at that value of what they are currently paying their taxes. Really, this is a program to encourage people to invest in their homes or their businesses without the fear of having increased taxes. So as they, you know, make the improvements on their property, then that appraised value increases. And whatever that difference between, you know, when that application was submitted to after the improvements are made, that's called the increment. So that's the increase in appraised value, which corresponds to an increase in property taxes. So whatever that increase is, that's the part that gets rebated. So again, the base of taxes, we're not losing any taxes. That is, that is strong. It's encouraging people to invest in their homes and businesses to get that extra rebate for the additional appraised value. And if there are any questions, please jump in. Just giving you a couple examples of just in, you know, in and around KCK, well, in KCK, what, just a couple examples of some properties that have utilized the program. So this is a four-plex, you can see.
Ms. Carter, I don't mean to harm... I don't have anything on my screen. I didn't know if you were waiting to put it up, but I don't see anything.
It...I am sharing my screen. Can everyone else see the pictures?
I can.
You said you cannot?
Yes, I can.
Oh, you can...I wonder, is it your view, Ms. Wanda?
Well, I see her, and she said to put it up. But I don't see anything except for the time. It says, "New upcoming meeting date today." I don't see anything. So I don't know what I'm supposed to click to see it. I thought she had control of that. So I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I don't...
No, I would like you to be able to see it.
Wanda, go down and click on your little zoom button down on the bottom of your screen and see if she, if the pictures pop up. That's what I had to do.
No.
No.
Uh-uh. Don't worry about it. Just...
Okay, I can...
Agenda has an attachment, if you need to open that.
Oh, great. Yeah, if you have the agenda, it should be, should be on there.
Well, I already saw it. I thought you were showing what was sent to us, but I didn't know who was doing something.
Yes, no, that's what, that's what I'm going through. I'm just giving the explanation behind it. Okay. So these are just a couple examples of some properties. And really, you know, we look at small, small projects. So this is not for the multi, you know, tens of millions of dollar projects, you know, giant commercial projects. This is really capped at $3 million. So this is for all those projects that are too small to, you know, have a TIF district or get different bonds and other, some of the other tools that we have. But it's really for those projects, you know, as small as someone just wanting to renovate their home to, you know, as you could see, that last one was, you know, a new commercial building, but still under, under that $3 million cap. So it's much more accessible, very low fees, you know, kind of the ability to enter this program is very accessible to everyone. So in the last 10 years, just to kind of give you a bit of a snapshot, in the last 10 years, we've had 312 projects total. So this is not all in USC 500, this is overall. So it does include some in Turner. And so that's primarily residential. That's really where we see this project, this program being utilized. And what I really want to hone in on is the difference and kind of really the value of this program. So for all of, it's kind of, I like things in charts, so we can see this. But for the entirety of all the projects, the pre-construction appraised value was about $42 million. That corresponded to overall property taxes of about 1.5 million. So obviously, a good chunk of that comes to USC 500. Now, once the construction and the improvements happened, that actually went from 42 million to 125 million. So we're talking a really significant increase in appraised value, which resulted in over $4 million in property taxes. Now, while some of that, you know, is rebated for those for five or 10 years, depending on where you are in the city, that post that time that the rebate is there, all of that will be coming directly to the different taxing jurisdictions. So obviously, again, you know, we're talking about real, real money here that can be resulted in this program. Here's a, again, this kind of snapshot of the last 10 years and where, where projects have happened. So as you know, USC 500 is that outline there. So really, the vast majority of projects, we've really focused on Area 1, as you can see. So that is really the spot where, you know, there's a significant amount of revitalization that we would like to see and encourage. And people have responded and really are using this program. Any questions thus far?
Yes, Catherine, this is Dr. Nguyen.
Yeah.
So these are for single-family dwellings?
So at this moment, and there is one proposed change that I'll get into, but at this time, it can be used for the rehabilitation of single-family, new-built, single-family. It can be used for rehabilitation of multifamily. And then also for commercial buildings, either rehabilitation or new build.
Okay, and for the single-family, is there a minimum rehab cost to be eligible?
There is not a minimum rehab cost. Instead, the way we kind of determine eligibility is that the amount, the improvements that you make have to result in over 15% increase in appraised value. So in some cases, you know, for a house, that's $10,000. For others, that's, you know, $70,000. So if you're looking at a commercial building or something. So we're trying to kind of meet people where they are with their property. And as long as there is a 15% increase in appraised value, they are eligible. I will also mention that in that Area 1, this, this program is for 10 years, 10-year rebate. Any of this Area 2, that's 5-year.
And so if a resident is interested, they contact you in the Economic Development Office?
Yes, exactly.
And your phone number is what?
You can reach us at 7...no, that would be my cellphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm just wondering, are landlords able to use your services as well? Or do they qualify if they are renting properties? I did see apartments, but I was wondering about homes.
So in homes, it is at this time only for owner occupied. If, the one caveat is if you have a duplex or row houses, then if you live in one of them, then the others can be rented.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to get into some of the changes that we are proposing. And again, if there are any questions, just please feel free to stop me. A lot of these, like this one, are kind of procedural, so I can kind of zip through those. But I do think that this is important. You know, as I mentioned, I'm giving presentations to all the different taxing jurisdictions. They all have to approve this. It all, it all takes quite a lot of time. And so, you know, we think we've, we are putting together a pretty good program this time around. We've got a good team in place. So one suggestion that I'm proposing is to actually have the term be five years instead of three years, which just gives us a little more runway and hopefully ramp up the program. Currently, this was started just after the 2008 downturn. We had, in KCK, we had a number of different TIF districts. That's Tax Increment Financing Districts that were specifically for residential areas. And then, as you know, once that downturn happened, there was really no building of houses. So one change that was made was to provide NRA eligibility in TIF districts. Now, the reason we are proposing that that is removed is because, you know, as you could see from that chart that I showed right at the beginning, we're talking about the increment of property tax. And so both TIF districts and NRA districts are talking, they're basically using that same money, that same increment. So we're pretty much spending that twice. And the Unified Government has just been providing that directly from our general fund because, of course, the increment is only a one-time thing. So we are proposing, since the housing market seems to be doing well, and we can encourage kind of other ways in, to help with kind of housing in these different districts, that we remove the NRA eligibility in TIF districts. Again, these ones are kind of more procedural, but I think important. Currently, the NRA rebate is fluctuating based on market conditions. So you have kind of that immediate increase in your appraised value due to, due to the improvements that you made on your property. But at this point, we just have kind of what that base value is. And then anything above that for that five or 10-year period is rebated. So that takes into account just the general appreciation of property in the area. So one thing that we are suggesting, and this will also help with just calculating this and calculating the rebate and making it more timely, is having a fixed percent. So whatever that percentage increase that was, that came from the actual improvements that you did, that will be the percentage that will then be taken for the entire period. So whether that's five or 10 years. So it really will be more focused on the improvements made and kind of taking out some of that market fluctuation. As you could see from the previous slide with the map, there are three or four different Area 1s, because over time, different sections were added. And so even though they're all five years with a 95% rebate, they're all named different things. And so one thing we are suggesting is that we create consistency and just create a single Area 2. Also, Area 2 got, was, was pretty complicated because USD 202 had different eligibility requirements. So they had an investment threshold that they were really interested in kind of previously. I did make this presentation to the Turner School District last week, and they agreed to remove all this. And so they will now be consistent with the rest of, with that rest of Area 2. So they will be, both USC 500 and USC 202 will now all have the exact same eligibility requirements, which I think helps not only the people using the project and the program, but also helps staff that we're not constantly having to look at the, you know, where, where those projects lie. One thing we do want to make sure that people know about this, this program, we do think it is a good one, especially for kind of your smaller developers, people who are just making that investment that we want to see in their properties. So sometimes, we have found that people don't find out about it until they get their permit. And so we want, right now, once you get your permit, you are not eligible anymore, which is a little funny. So you would have had to apply before that. But if you only found out about the program when you get your permit, so we're, we're suggesting that you have a kind of a 30-day grace period once you get the permit to finish your application.
Are you trying to, trying to market this? Because if people don't know, then you, how are you trying to get the word out?
Yeah, that's a great point. So, you know, we have it on our website, of course, which I'm sure all of you have spent tons of time looking at. I'm joking. No, but, you know, we want to make sure that when people come, when they're talking about doing improvements on their house or their, their business, if they go get their permit, they, everyone finds out about it. Our hope is that this will be that additional, you know, just enough. It's not a huge benefit, but it's maybe just enough of a benefit to have someone who is maybe on the fence about putting in a significant amount of money into their home now saying, "Well, okay, if I'm going to get some rebate back, maybe that does, does make sense." So, you know, we are doing what we can. But this is also why I enjoy doing these presentations to groups like yours is, you know, and I also go and talk to neighborhood groups and all of that throughout the year. But, you know, talking to the school district, you have quite a, quite a reach. So just doing, doing what we can to get the word out. And if you know of people who are interested in possibly doing some work on their home or business, make sure they, they give us a call. So this is a pretty, you know, different change. So this one is not just kind of the procedural change. At the moment, we're only, we only allow multifamily projects if they are rehab projects. I would like to suggest that we allow for new construction multifamily. So this, again, is not for those giant, you know, you're not going to see a 200-unit apartment complex going in right in the middle of a neighborhood. No, that's, that is not what this is for. This is, again, for projects that are under $3 million. So really, your four-plex or your six-plex, that would be kind of in a, in a commercial corridor where you're wanting to get additional density. And at the moment, there is really nothing that we can do. We have no tools at the UG level to really help those projects move forward. So suggesting that this is something that we expand to allow for new construction of multifamily. And our last proposed change is the removal of Area 4. This was the Piper School District. We did not see, it's been in the plan for three years. We have not seen a single application in that area. Additionally, we received an opinion from the Kansas Attorney General, who said that the NRA program really is to be more targeted. It's to really focus on specific areas of the city that could use that extra boost to encourage revitalization. And it shouldn't just blanket an entire city. So that is, would be our, our change there. So this is what the new map would look like. Hopefully, kind of much less busy. Got kind of just, or three, three areas. And really, only two different, you know, your Area 1, which is 10 years at 95% rebate. And then Area 2 and 3, which are five years and 95% rebate, all with all the rest of the same, same rules. So I'm happy to answer any questions. But what I would be asking of you all is to consider this and approve it and have inter-local agreements executed, so we can get this moving and hope we hopefully see a lot more revitalization throughout the city in the next five years.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Ms. Carter. Now, this is what you do in order to do it. You have to get approval from the surrounding school district?
Yes.
And so how does this benefit us?
Well, over time, you're getting more property tax, is really what is the big, is the big hook, is that, you know, you're kind of keeping, you're not losing any property tax. But then, when people invest in their homes, then, you know, the appraised value increases for that five or 10 years, depending on where they're located. That, that increase is rebated. However, after the five or 10 years, that entirety comes back to the taxing jurisdiction. So, you know, in the last 10 years overall, so this is, I didn't have a chance to break it out, but I certainly can if that is of interest. But in the last 10 years, the NRA projects, the property tax has gone from about 1.5%, sorry, 1.5 million to about 4.5 million in terms of what is paid in, in property taxes. So with the, you know, the school district being 20, 30% of that, that adds up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Dr. Nguyen again. Did the, did the housing development on the corner of 8th and Washington get this, any, get any rebate?
Yes, so they did apply for an NRA. They are in what's called a special district because it is a historic revitalization. They were actually able to get, it's a less percentage, but a longer project timeframe. So we've only had three projects do this in, since 1999. They were one of them. So they actually got a 20-year abatement at 85%.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you. So could I get a motion that we accept the NRA presentation to approve it? So moved.
Second.
Could I get, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the NRA Act presentation for approval. Are there any questions? Thank you. Susan, could you do a roll call vote, please? Susan, you're on mute.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Carter. Thank you so much for your presentation.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Madam President, I think we're, I think we probably ought to technically have a motion to approve the actual interlocal agreement as well, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion that we in that we approved the interlocal agreement?
I'm moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the interlocal agreement. Are there any questions? Okay, Susan, we're ready for the vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valina Nguyen.
Yes.
Stacy Egger.
A C S.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready for the bond update by Mr. Covington.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board and Superintendent. We have Mr. Lee Moore with us today, our construction partner. He will bring us the bond update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Madam President, Board, Dr. Faust, great to see everybody tonight. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm gonna do my best here to share my screen and we'll get started. So we've got 15 projects to talk about tonight, and I'll start with a brief financial update. So we're still trending pretty close to where we were last month. We're showing about $2.3 million worth of savings to the overall bond issue. Through May of 2020, we've got approximately $168 million worth of work put in place for this bond issue for the hard costs. And we're about 92% complete. So I'll jump right into the project updates. First project is the maintenance facility, which is just north of West Park, the new West Park Elementary School. So we're actually putting the finishing touches on that. You can see a picture of inside of one of the buildings, and then a couple exterior pictures there. We are getting the entry gates installed this week and looking for city inspection next week to get ready to turn over to you guys. So pretty exciting to, I'm hopefully Doug's excited to get started on that. Next projects are Argentine and Eisenhower Middle School. So at Eisenhower, we're doing some maker space and career exploration space in there. And we're complete with paint and tile, working on ceiling grid, and should be wrapping that project up first of July. And then in Argentine, we've got the same career exploration space. We've got some secure entry work, and we've got a little bit of site work at the entrance. So we are in the process of starting painting and starting some of our finishes in that in that building. You can see some of the site work, the sidewalk, the new sidewalk cord there, and you can see just a bunch of unpainted drywall that hopefully here in a week or so we'll start painting on. So that project is slated to be completed in late, late July. Next project is a central middle school renovation. So we do have some plumbing renovation work there, as well as some career exploration space, and then some new entrance concrete. And you can see in the picture there, we've got new ADA ramps and stairs. Our handrail for that should be showing up here this week. And then we've got on the plumbing improvements, we have water fountain areas that we're replumbing, and the water fountain should be going in next week as well. And then you can see in the career exploration space there, just wrapping up drywall and getting ready to do ceiling and paint finishes there. Next project is Carl B. Bruce, the new middle school there at the Northwest Middle School Site. We've got several pictures here to talk about, but we're basically inside the building, we're pretty much wrapped up. We're doing final cleaning and a punch list on that project. On the outside, we're working on some site concrete in the courtyards. And our irrigation is about 20% complete, should be complete the second week of July, and landscaping will start going in next week. You can see some of the finishes. We've got the gym picture there and and some pictures of some of our classroom space there. Sorry, I have a little issue here with my save screen. Okay, so our next project is Lowell Bruny Elementary School. Again, on the, we're wrapping up finishes on the inside of the building there. You can see some pictures of the multipurpose room, really cool ceiling design there. You can also see the administration desk there. So kind of similar to Carl B. Bruce, we're we're finishing up punch list inside the building. On the outside, we've started sod installation and turning the site green. Playground mulch is starting to be installed. You can see a picture of the playground there. And so we'll be looking to turn over that building shortly as well. Next project is our elementary renovations at Emerson and Noble Prentice. At Emerson, we are doing the office remodel and some site improvements on site. So you can see there some some site work we've completed there at the main entrance, and we're working on the interior remodel for the admin space. We're currently working on flooring and dropping ceiling tiles. We've just passed our ceiling inspection. And then at Noble Prentice, you can see we're working on the entry. There's a kitchen that we've just been working on the flooring, and we'll see kitchen equipment coming in late next week. And then we've got a little bit of work on the entry there. You can see the casework and the new storefront. Next project is Francis Willard Elementary. We've got some interior work there, a new bathroom and renovation to the administration space. And we're looking to be done with the inside by mid-July. And then the sidewalks and sidewalks are going in. You can see the pictures of the site work. We've got a new bus loop and new parent drop off as well. And so we're going to start pouring the concrete for that pavement next week. We've got a small renovation at Stony Point South Elementary. You can see a picture of the new admin space. We actually did a punch list on that space today with the architect, and it should be wrapping that up very quickly. Same goes with Lindberg Elementary. We've got the renovation of the administration, a new secure entry. We punched that bill building as well today. John F. Kennedy Elementary, that project, we are working on flooring this week and doing some trim out next week, and we should be wrapping that up about mid-July. We've also got a little bit extra work there with the parking lot and some new concrete at the entrance. Where did my mouse go? Okay. Next project, West Park Elementary School. So you can see, we've got striping and asphalt down, so we do have all the striping complete. This picture is a couple days old, but we actually finished sod installation today. Our irrigation is operational. We're taking down our temporary fence around the West Park Elementary, putting that around William Allen White as we prepare to get demolition kicked off on that on that existing building. You can see some pictures of the inside looking really good. We're we're in the final cleaning and punch list phase as well on that project. And then the last project with pictures is our work at Washington High School. We are doing a couple new chemistry science labs, which you can see there on the left hand side. That is the flooring that was just finished up, and we're actually working on ceilings, casework, and countertops this week. The rest of the pictures are pictures of the bathrooms that are being renovated. And we're looking to have the majority of this work finished by the Fourth of July weekend.
Thank you.
Final project, which I don't have any pictures on because we just started today, is the second floor corridors at Harmon. And we'll be, they're finishing up with the abatement, and we're getting in and putting in new ceilings and lights.
Thank you. We appreciate you letting us know of the updates and keeping us aware of the changes.
Okay, any, any questions? Awesome. Well, thank you for your time.
Okay, we're now ready for the legislative update by Bill Brady.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello. Yes, yes, we can.
Good to see everyone. Hope everybody's staying safe. Well, it's been an interesting time in Topeka, as I'm sure it's been an interesting time at KCKPS as well. And the legislature is finally done. We had first adjournment on March 18, and then we're supposed to go back on April 27, but didn't make it back until May 21 for one day. And then they didn't pass the governor's grade card. So she vetoed what they did and called them back on June 3. And they did a little bit better job. So she signed, approved the bill that they passed on June 3. So so we're done for the year. Absent another special session, that last one was a special session. I just quickly ran over that because I wanted to really focus in on a couple of issues. Right now, we're real busy with the SPARC, the issue of SPARC, which is the acronym in state government they're used to explain how the state is going to distribute the $1.25 billion that the state of Kansas has received as part of the Federal Cares Act. Now, there was an original appropriation that came directly from the federal government, and education got some of that Title I money. That that was directly directly to institutions from the federal government. But the second stage is money that's based on a per person, per resident count. And the state of Kansas calculation is 1.25 billion. And the state is is planning on distributing it in three, what they're calling three phases. And the first phase will be money that will go directly to counties or in Wyandotte County's case, to the unified government. And it's going to happen really quickly. The 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 first 300 million, I think it's 350 million dollars is going to be distributed by a formula that amounts to $194 per resident. So if you take the population numbers of each county and you multiply times 194, you come up with basically your county's appropriation. That money is then sent to the unified government. They'll be passing, the state will be providing them a resolution to pass, and they will be then hopefully sharing it with the other taxing units within Wyandotte County. That process is going to start really quickly. As I mentioned, there's a webinar for the county officials on Friday to discuss some of these details. And then the money will actually, at least the first portion of the $350 million statewide will be distributed around the 15th of July. And the counties then will will then go about the process. Because there's regulations, you can imagine on how this money can be spent. It has to be spent on actual expenses incurred within, you know, because of COVID. And so that, you know, that I've said on numerous meetings, and ideally, what's going to happen is there'll be a process of which counties will hear from their local folks and come up with a plan. They have to return that plan to the state by August 15. So you can see that first phase is going to happen pretty quickly. And then Phase Two is an additional amount of about $525 million. And the state Spark Task Force, a group of citizens and legislators that the governor appointed, they have determined that they're going to distribute that in four basic areas, health, education, infrastructure, and economic development. So that will happen then later, earlier in the fall, basically later than Phase One. And and the the details, the rules for that, how that's going to be distributed and applied for will will be coming probably in July sometime. So then the the final amount, then all this money has to be spent by the end of the year, and it has to be spent on COVID related expenses. Now, they are trying to get some clarification. I mean, as they've stated in these meetings that I've been attending, the rules are being written weekly. So that, you know, they're getting information weekly on how the how the governance is going to be handled with this. But right now, they're they're waiting on the issue of, you know, if it's an encumbered expense but not spent, would that meet the December 30 deadline that's basically in the Cares Act? So needless to say, there's a lot of activity that's going to happen between now and end of the year in terms of getting this COVID money, trying to reimburse governments. And it's not just governments. It the phases two and three will involve, you know, economic development for businesses. You know, it just the whole gamut of needs that a county would have in terms of costs related to COVID. So so that's what I've been spending a lot of time with. I also wanted to touch, just mentioned, the legislature has the the leadership legislature has approved four interim committee studies for this summer, and we'll be monitoring those and and keeping Dr. Faust and Stephen and Dennis and, of course, you you folks aware of any issues that come about as related to these four interim committees, we call them. And that they are on four different subjects, economic recovery, study committee, foster care oversight, the Emergency Management Act, and mental health modernization and reform. So those are the four broad topics. And of course, those are those are broad topics that the legislature will be studying this summer and fall, mainly, probably mainly in the fall. The the last thing, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. Last thing I wanted to mention is, obviously, this is an election year. My office does a guide that provides information, contact information to all the candidates that run for state or federal offices. And I'll get some guides to Stephen so he can share with you folks because you'll have contact information as you're out and about this fall, hopefully. You know, you'll, I would assume, hopefully, see some of these people. They'll be interested in education. And certainly, when candidates are candidates, they're a lot more interested in talking to us. So, you know, you'll have an opportunity, I'm sure, to to interact with folks. So I can get you, there's three Senate in the state legislature, there's three Senate districts in Wyandotte County, and eight state legislative races. And only one of the legislative races, actually, there's only one candidate, and that's our own, very own Dr. Nguyen. So she's locked to get reelected, I would assume. But the other 10 races, the three senators and the other seven House seats have various level of competition. In some cases, you know, three or four people running a couple on in each party. So I'll provide that information to you. So that's a quick rundown of kind of what I've been up to. And I'd be happy to respond to any questions. I didn't go over the budget cuts, the issue of budget cuts. And the reason I didn't do that, I'm glad to, but I'd be glad to come back a little later in the year, because I we really don't have any information at this point in detail, other than we know that we have a deficit for the next fiscal year. And dependent upon, you know, how much money that the state gets for help governments with the deficits, this COVID money that I described is not meant to be the budget. It's meant to be reimbursed for actual expenses incurred. So any questions?
Anyone with questions? Well, I guess you have given us enough information, and it's thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, we're now ready for the reports of the superintendent.
As at the Kansas City Board of Education, except for informational purposes, the proposed change for health insurance providers by Blue Cross Blue Shield to United Healthcare as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Finance Officer, and recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening again, board.
Good evening.
We're gonna go over some information. I have um Matt and Dave Crow on the web to go over uh the actual um RFP that was done. So let me share my screen.
Mr. Covington?
Yes.
Are are these two gentlemen with an insurance company?
No, they are CBiz.
Okay.
So Matt or Dave, take it away.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh Board members. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
We um back in March um met with Kelly and uh and Mr. Covington, Kelly Dishman and Mr. Covington, and went over the status of the plan. And at the time, we were a little concerned that the utilization had increased dramatically from the prior twelve months. In fact, the way we evaluate that is on a per member per month claim cost. And over that time period, the prior twelve months, your per member per month claim cost were four hundred and ninety two dollars. They had risen to five hundred and fifty two, which was a twelve percent increase. And we mentioned that, Mr. Covington and Mrs. Dishman, and um Tushman, and what what we suggested, looking at potentially a ten or twelve percent rate increase was we need to go to the marketplace and see if there's alternatives and other carriers that would be willing to write the insurance for the district. So we, and they agreed totally. So we uh proceeded to draft a response for proposal, send it to all the major carriers. And this proposal here shows those that responded and what their costs were going to be. Starting in the left-hand corner with the carrier currently is Blue Cross Blue Shield. You can see that the funding of your plan right now is thirty million two twenty one. That's based on your unit rates, et cetera. But last year, when we did the renewal, Mr. Covington, Mrs. Tushman, looked at it and said, we want to make sure that we have this plan adequately funded. So right now you are funding your plan at about thirty one million dollars. That's including employees that are insuring their dependents, COBRA participants, et cetera. So the total revenue coming in to the plan is around thirty one million. So we're hopeful that at the end of this year, there will be a little cushion, but in the event there isn't, we did the RFP. And you can see the proposals that are 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 presented here. The renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield came in at thirty two point six million. The proposal from United Healthcare came in at thirty one point eight million. The proposal from Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is a different uh uh organization with them, it's a national alliance, it's out of South Carolina, they actually came in at about forty two million dollars. And the reason for that is they had a larger stop-loss attachment point. And this was worst-case scenario from each of these carriers. The same with Aetna, they came in at about thirty six million, and Cigna came in at thirty nine million eight hundred and ninety thousand. So obviously, when you look at these proposals here, you can see that two of them were probably worthy of consideration. That is the renewal from Blue Cross and Blue Shield as well as the United Healthcare proposal. And that's what we have presented um to Mr. Covington and Mrs. Tushman and asked them to uh to see if uh where we would go from there. This represents approximately a five point one percent increase based on your current funding for the Blue Cross plan. Although we show there at the seven point nine, since you're funding at thirty one million, it's going to be approximately five point one. And it's approximately two point five percent for United Healthcare. Um, the impact would be to the employees. Um, I think Mr. Covington can address the the funding arrangement in terms of what the district is going to be contributing on a per member per month basis or per employee. Um, but those are the proposals under consideration. There's a difference there, as you can see, from thirty two point six million to thirty one eight million of about eight hundred thousand dollars um between the two proposals. So I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions.
Uh, this is Wanda Brown. Is it concerning that we're in this COVID thing? Is that a normal thing to do, that it's okay to make these kind of changes considering what's going on and with the health situation being the way it is?
I I think that's a great question, uh one that we talked with the Insurance Committee about as well. Um, this would be if the district decided to move away from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City to United Healthcare. This would be January first. Um, obviously, we know we're not out of the woods or even close with COVID nineteen. Um, but if a decision was made uh with the help of our organization and the team that works with the district, as far as um we've already done provider analysis, we've already showed the hospital networks, we've showed the doctors and specialists that overlap between the two. Uh, we're confident that United Healthcare has a great network. Blue Cross Blue Shield uh has been a great partner of the district. Um, we have employer groups um that uh are looking to change for January one. They certainly are taking that into consideration. Um, as you all know, we haven't experienced um a pandemic before. Um, so that has been discussed, uh but we do feel with the timing, again, the event that the district makes this change, uh that we'd be able to address everyone's coordination of care needs.
Any other questions?
Uh, I I also have another question on the comparative between the two. There was a question mark on chronic medication may not be covered. Well, what's the answer for that? For United Healthcare? Because all we have a question mark.
Yeah, there was uh some conversation on that with the committee. Those, I I think there was a few concerns that some prescriptions weren't going to be covered. Um, it's not a matter of them not being covered, it's just a matter of what tier of formulary that those uh medications fall under.
Because if I'm looking at this, I don't need a question mark. I need to know. And that's just, it just seems kind of iffy. And that's not always a good thing.
No, great question. I think those um, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Covington, I think those came from the Insurance Committee as far as them doing some homework, but we're confident that the formulary or the prescription drugs that are um with United Healthcare, they're going to be covered. But again, it just depend, depends on what tier they're going to be covered at. There's not going to be exclusions for medications that folks are currently taking under Blue Cross Blue Shield. And um, I guess, coincidentally, but Blue Cross Blue Shield last year just switched to Optum to run their pharmacy benefit program. Optum is actually owned by United Healthcare. And Optum would be your pharmacy benefit manager if the district made the choice to switch to United Healthcare.
And uh Ms. Page, I just want to say the question mark was just due to, it was dependent on which type of drug that individuals were referring to. There was not a yes or no for every type drug as to the uh tier that it would be in. That was what the question mark was for.
Okay, but when, I'm sorry, but for me, I want to know. What you just said, it to me would have been helpful to put that down than to just leave it with a question mark. Because then the mind just goes rampant. Well, hey, these people probably won't do anything because you don't really feel confident. You want to see something in writing to say, hey, they're going to cover this. No, they're not going to cover this. Or what is the formula? Because insurances, they're crapshoot. They might cover, you spend too much, then you get dropped. Then we got a problem. So we want to make sure that we provide the best for our people. And it scares me to change in midstream in lieu of what's going on. I'm just being honest.
I have a question. When it comes to tiers, sometimes what's a tier one and versus a tier three can be a big difference in co-payments. Is that correct? So while UHC may cover the drug, it may be a big change in the co-payment for the patient.
Yeah, good question, a good statement. There's always the possibility of that. So there are a lot of qualified high deductible health plans under what the district offers. So those would be in, you know, the healthcare, those that are on a traditional type PPO plan. They're going to have one of those three copays as you mentioned. We have circulated to the committee, who I believe has dispersed it to those that have been interested. They know exactly what tier their medication currently would fall in in the event that the district moves to United Healthcare. So that has been circulated. This is the full formulary list from United Healthcare. So those um would be able to look to see what prescription they're taking and know what tier it falls under right now. But you are right, there can be some that move from tier one to tier two. Uh, and it could also go the other way as well. Some that were in tier two that maybe went to tier one and provided a little break to the employee. So it does work both ways, and that's a good point to um to point out for everyone.
Okay, that would explain some of the emails that we've been getting. People very concerned that their drugs are going to be priced out of their range now. If if that, if you have furnished them with that formulary. We've been getting quite a few emails with that concern.
Yep, we have circulated that and it's probably a couple of weeks ago. Um, again, that went to the Insurance Committee. Uh, how far it um got from there. I know that everyone is talking with their peers and others to um discuss this information about Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare. Uh, but that has been provided and uh can be provided to anybody that that needs it.
Matt, could you explain that with Blue Cross Blue Shield going to the UMB that's ran by United Healthcare? How that would play into this situation?
Uh, I'm sorry, Dennis, as far as um the 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 pharmacy benefit manager being opted?
Yes.
Blue Cross Blue Shield did go through a formal um RFP process. Uh, I think it was actually a couple of years to iron everything out, but they did switch to Optum away from Express Scripts. And again, Optum is the pharmacy benefit manager everyone currently has right now. That does not mean that if the district were to move United Healthcare, the formulary or where those drugs fall are identical. It does mean that you have the same pharmacy benefit manager if you were to move to United Healthcare that the district currently has right now. Uh, so there are some efficiencies as far as having the same PBM. Um, but also, you know, each insurance carrier, each third-party administrator, they all have their own formularies and their own arrangements that they work out. Um, so they aren't going to be identical, but they are going to be the same provider for the prescription drug card, again, in the event that United Healthcare is the district's carrier going forward.
So Mr. Covington, are you going to show the updated um or the version from the Insurance Committee that we were sent that differs from your chart?
Are we talking this page, ma'am?
Correct. This is yours, and then there's another one that we received.
I think the issue was as how I put the slide together versus how they thought it was. On the left side are questions about switching to United Healthcare. So if I can just walk through this slide, maybe it helped clear up some of the confusion. So the question was.
No, the question was, then are we going to see the other one as well? Can you put them side by side?
Uh, no, because they're two different presentations. But I would give you their answers after what they wanted switched.
Well, we have received a copy of their answers. Go right here.
If we switch to United Healthcare, is there an additional cost? It's eight hundred thousand dollars if we switch as an additional cost, but if we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's a million four additional costs. Is there an increase to the employee if we uh switch to United Healthcare? The answer is no. But if we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the answer is yes. If we switch to United Healthcare, do you have to switch doctors? The answer is is no. The committee thought it was yes, but Matt and uh Dave went back and we pulled a top fifty providers and it was a one-to-one match. So there may be a opportunity that there is some physician that's not on the list, but right now we're pretty confident that you won't have to switch doctors. Is switching irresponsible? We didn't think it was, but the committee said yes. During this time of pandemic, they thought switching was irresponsible. Does switching save district money? But a large out-of-pocket uh increase to the employees? To switch was a no because uh there's no increase in the premiums for any employees on the any plane. The district, I mean, the committee thought that there will be a large out-of-pocket increase due to uh changing in doctors, prescriptions, or um coverage limitations. So they made rated that as a yes. And Matt just covered the uh chronic medication may not be covered. So he went over there and I explained what the question mark was. As a chiropractic, chiropractic visits less. Uh, the committee said yes. We agree that's a yes. Because under our current um insurance, you get six visits per year, per event. And under United Healthcare, you get three chiropractic visits and three OTPT visits per year. EAP visits, uh when we first uh done the chart, the the original one said there was a change, but we have gotten further information from United Healthcare that we will have the same number of visits for your EAP.
And for clarity, what is EAP?
Employee Assistance Program.
Okay.
Uh, does switching require bank change for FSA and HAS? Um, Matt or Dave, could you sort of explain that one?
Yeah, absolutely. So the FSA, which is a flexible spending account, and then the HSA is which are the health savings account for those individuals who enroll in a qualified high deductible health plan. It allows them to put money or accept money from the district or district or put their own money into a tax-favored account. Those are independent of your insurance carrier. They're individually owned accounts. So we could have a conversation, do you keep those with UMB? Or would you look to switch to United Healthcare has an HSA arrangement as well, but those are independent and those could be left alone. They're not going to follow whatever insurance choice you make or insurance um carrier you choose. They can be independent.
Okay, and the last uh decision was, did United Healthcare have a bad reputation? Uh, we did not find anyone that said that it was a bad reputation, but the Insurance Committee said that it had a bad reputation. So those were the decision factors that was highlighted. I also sent you all the total uh word document that uh the Insurance Committee prepared. So I sort of picked out the ones that I could uh highlight and quantify.
Dennis, would you be able to go back? There was a example of the thousand dollars. Uh, um, I think it was the second slide.
Yes.
Could you review that, please?
Matt, Dave, could you walk through this one?
Sure. Um, so we uh just took, there's many plans that the district offers. If you look at a thousand dollar PPO plan, and we break it down by the current employee-only cost. Uh, six twenty-nine, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars is the current employee-only cost. The renewal under the um option with Blue Cross Blue Shield would go to six hundred and sixty dollars. The United Healthcare option is six hundred and forty-five dollars. What we did down below, and let's just to keep it simple, focus on the employee-only rate. So when you look down below, employees currently to buy up, okay, this is not the hundred percent paid-for plan that the district offers. This is one that employees can buy up to. Currently, they're paying fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. With the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, it'd be a couple of dollars. Currently, they're paying $59.88 with the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, it'd be a couple of dollars higher. And you see the United Healthcare rates are falling right where you currently are. So those are the employee-only costs below and up above, those four tiers represent the entire cost to the district. And then down below, if an individual in the districts was covering, in the district was covering a spouse or covering their children or child or their family, you see what their unit costs are right now. And then you see what the renewal would be and what the dependent costs would be with United Healthcare. And again, we picked one plan out of many, just to give you an example of what those costs look like.
So in essence, if they're staying with the same plan, then costs would increase ranging between maybe $20 or $25, depending on which plan it may be.
Yes.
Versus the, it will stay the same if UNC. Is that what I'm seeing?
Right, it's about 5% increase on Blue Cross and about 2.5% increase on United Healthcare. So there's 2.5% spread between the two.
But it will only stay the same, if I could interject, if we put the $800,000 in the budget as an increase. That's why it stays the same.
So in order for, so clarify, Dennis, so in order for Blue Cross Blue Shield to stay the same, we would have to add more money to that 800,000?
Yes, $1.4 million.
Okay.
And so that, this last slide was just an example of one of our lowest-paid employees that covered their family. And so we were just trying to pick out what, how it would affect, like we always talk about, how does any change affect your lowest-paid employees? So I went and found an employee that makes $447 an hour, that has family insurance. And if you just follow the numbers, right now, they bring home bi-monthly $215.85. If we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield and they change none of their deductions, because you know, that's on them about their deductions as far as dental and vision. And with the change in their health, they would, their bring-home pay would be $203.68 bi-monthly. So a paycheck reduction of $12, a monthly reduction of $24, an annual reduction of $292, which is 2%. That was just an example of how staying with Blue Cross was, or switching with UHC will affect one of our lowest-paid employees.
So have you had an opportunity to survey anybody other than the insurance committee? Mr. Covington?
We leave that up to the insurance committee. They have a representative from all employee groups.
So are you saying the chart that the insurance committee has sent us that I'll say revises this is correct or incorrect?
It's correct. It just answered the question a different way.
Okay, so how do you explain answering the questions differently?
So like, on the question of switching doctors, they said no on the revised one that you saw.
Correct.
Meaning if you stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you don't have to switch doctors. This chart just answers the questions. If we switch doctors, if we switch carriers, will we have to switch doctors? They said yes.
They said yes on the revised one?
Say again, ma'am?
They say yes on the revised one?
No, they, they have a no on theirs, because they was answering the question as if we stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
So I guess my concern is, here you have an insurance committee that represents the range of employees. And you're saying they don't understand how the question is being asked?
No, they didn't understand how I represented the data on this chart.
Well, one would think then we need to find a resolution. I mean, we hear, we get the memo that said they understand. You say they don't understand. We're kind of in a box.
But we're staying the same thing.
But the answers are different.
Let me just say, even if the answers are different, and right now what they're presenting is clarity, to make sure that everything is understood. And so what we have to do now is to make the decision as to whether or not we're going to move forward with this.
Well, Mrs. Drew, I challenge your statement, because the emails we had gotten from members of the insurance committee is not that it is clear. To say Mr. Covington is providing clarity is one side of the story. The emails we've gotten is that they are not, they are not clear.
You don't believe he's providing clarity at this time?
He, excuse me?
You don't believe that he's providing clarity at this time, even if there was a mistake that was made?
I'm saying he's providing his position. They have sent us emails to say they have a different position. Now, as a board, we're supposed to have, one would think, input from an insurance committee that understood what was discussed. Now, if they don't understand, then there's a breakdown in communication. And that's why I said, Mr. Covington is clear, but they're not accepting that clarity. And I don't, and I don't either.
Madam President, what I gathered from many of the remarks from the insurance committee was that many people have contacted their physicians, their current physicians, and they have told them that they will not accept United Healthcare, and that is their concern. That even if the information that CBIZ and UHC has says that they are in-network, the physicians are saying they will not accept UHC. So I guess that is where the concern is with our employees, is that they're being told that their current doctors, their primary cares or their specialists are not going to participate. So that's where the employees are concerned. And I think we need to, I'm not sure how, we need to get that cleared up before we make a final decision. And since this is presented as an informational item or a budget recommendation, do we need to make a final decision on this tonight?
No, ma'am. This was brought to you all for informational purposes.
Right.
So is there a way, Mr. Covington, that we can get some kind of input from our employees or further information or clarification?
Well, one of the things he said is that the insurance committee would have to do that. And the recommendation would be to go to them and have them get the information.
So would it be helpful if they see some of the feedback that we've been receiving as a board? I'm talking, Mr. Covington, I'm just wondering, how do we make sure that we are being consistent in the message and in the questions that are being asked?
I mean, they've shared that letter with all of their committee that they sent to me and I forwarded on to you guys. But as far as to help, to answer Janie's question, I don't know everyone's physician. So we would have to get their names and then have Matt and Dave see if they're listed as a provider under United Healthcare. But we did run our top 50 providers, and all of them was covered under United Healthcare and Blue Cross Blue Shield. But as I said, there could be some specialist doctors out there that right now are not listed.
And I do know from previous experience that sometimes quarterly, all those things change. They drop off and they go on. And with all the things that are going on in the medical field right now, it could be some of those people are no longer on that list. So maybe we just need to find out some more information before we make a final decision.
I think, sorry, Janie, were you finished?
Well, and then I think maybe we need to, if we did stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, maybe we need to make it clear that it may result in a premium being paid by the employees and are they willing to pay that premium?
During the, during the insurance committee meetings, we made that known.
Okay. I wasn't in those meetings, so I was not sure if that was known.
Yes.
I do have a question, Dennis. I think that it would be beneficial to ask the committee if they would help provide some of the names of the concerned providers that they feel may not be listed on there, because as I was part of some of those, well, one of those insurance committees. And so I think clarifying with specific names of those providers to see what the disconnect is would help. Also, I think, you know, as some people have mentioned, we want to make sure that they know that the premiums may go up. I don't know if that's a survey to send out to our employees to give feedback or, you know, to all employees. So then you will have feedback from, you know, everybody who decided to give information on a survey that they do, that they're okay with their premiums to rise. You know, just in case there is a higher percentage of people who wants to give input, that may be something that the insurance committee may want to consider. And then lastly, the visits, the chiropractic, I'm sorry, the EAP visits. I think there was a clarification needed on that, because the note that we received indicated that only three per year were covered with UHC, and that would be telehealth, versus Blue Cross Blue Shield, which could be telehealth or another means. And then lastly, for FSA and HSA, I think it does need to be clarified, because right now I believe the committee is under the impression that it has to go away, meaning that the money they may have there, they carry it over year to year, may go away. I know that the FSA, I hope I'm saying it right, isn't that you have to spend it by the end of the year? Which, is that correct?
That's FSA, yes.
Right, so that would need to be spent by December prior to, if there were a change, or if not a change, you still have to spend those dollars. So what I'm hearing is no change will take effect this year, 2020, but it would take effect in 2021. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, the insurance switch over is January of 2021.
But either way, the FSA would have to be spent, but the HSA you can carry over.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And so I think, again, clarification needs to be made, because right now it's, it does require a bank change. Moving to UHC says yes, moving to, or keeping Blue Cross Blue Shield says no. But I think there's some confusion, because it said, well, it could be possible to not change that portion. But I think it's really important, especially for those who roll it over, to be clear, will they be able to keep that money and not lose it? Thank you.
And this is Wanda Brown. I have another question, because I worked for the district for 30 years. And the problem, every time they change, I'm a Wyandotte County resident. The doctors that I had, they were not in Wyandotte County. And it would be nice if there was a list or if you knew, because every time they changed, we had to move somewhere else. And that's not a good feeling. Now, I'm just making reference to the past, but a lot of those doctors were not in Wyandotte County. And as a resident, if you live here, you work here, you'd like to go to support the doctors that are in your area. And a lot of times, they were not on the list.
This is Randy Lopez. Thanks for the information, Dennis and Matt. Two quick things. One, just I think an observation, and I was able to attend one of the insurance committee meetings. I think it was meeting number four that they held, and that was it, along with Dr. Jaeger. So just two really quick observations. One, I think just another lesson learned for us. It felt like, and again, it was one meeting that I attended, but it felt like the insurance committee felt caught off guard with a potential change. So I think just including that committee, the conversation a little sooner to say, hey, we're thinking about potentially changing. Can we work collaboratively to find the best fit for our employees and for the district? So that, I think that would have solved a lot of the issues with the potential changes so late in the game, or at least that perception from the committee. I think that would have helped ease any potential changes that could come forward. So just one quick lesson, one observation in terms of a lesson learned for us as a district. And secondly, I wonder if it would be helpful, I know that the insurance committee sent the board some follow-up information, and Dennis, you forwarded their concerns as well. They're just kind of their thoughts that they put together. Would it be helpful to hear from them so that they can answer any questions? And I know someone suggested maybe it's them surveying. I mean, I wonder if, before we make a decision of having one of their representatives maybe share their insights or thoughts and be able to answer any questions from the board? Would that be helpful at all? So just throwing that out there, but thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item, an update on the phase-in process for employee and student return for the 2021 school year submitted by Stephen Linkus, Chief of Staff, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Faust. Myself and Kelly Tushman tonight have the opportunity to discuss with you the phase-in plan for the 2021 school year. And please let me know if you can hear me. When we get on the, we get on the mic, you never know. But thank you, guys. And I just want to give you a little background before we actually get into the presentation. We have three committees or task forces that were working on this information. So we had the employee reentry task force, the school reentry task force, and then we also have the parent survey task force. So within these three task forces, we were able to come up with the phases that we're going to be presenting to you. The first two phases are going to be employee-driven. The third phase will be the return of our school-based employees, as well as our students with the educational plan. And then, of course, we'll be looking at next steps. If you could, please ask questions at the end of the presentation, we'd be very, very thankful for that. But if questions do pop up that are pressing, we'll try to get them answered during the presentation. So as we look at the three different task forces, the employee reentry task force, one of their main jobs was to put the employee survey together. So as we were looking to bring employees back, we sent out a survey on May 23 that over 2,000 of our employees filled out. We took that information and it helped us come up with some of the mitigation processes and some of the things we did between June 1 and June 30. But before we get into that, just to give you an idea, the reentry task force had over 30 members, was broken up into different committees. These committees worked in different areas and looked at every employee group that we have within the organization. The group itself was able to meet on 10 different occasions in the months of May and in June, with the primary process of getting our employees back in a safe manner. And I'm new to PREZI, so I'm going to do my best to make this as smooth as possible. So when we got to the student return task force, this kind of bore out of the employee task force. Because as we had done the first two phases, it became very apparent that we needed to do something to get our kids back into school. So as we looked at the safety of our employees on June 1, July 1, and into August, we also wanted to look at creating a great school environment for our students upon return. As you see from this committee, we have over 50 members. If you count the student, excuse me, the subcommittees that were working along with this, you probably had close to 80 people that have been involved in this process to this point. This task force has met over the last few weeks, as you see on numerous dates, and with their sole goal of getting a safe return for both students and staff, and then also getting the educational options that we're going to be bringing forward to you. The last of the three task forces was the parent The last of the three task forces was the Parent Survey Task Force. This task force met between the end of May and early June, and what it was able to bring to the board was a parent survey. That parent survey closed out yesterday. We had a well over 2,000 responses from our community, and we'll be sharing some of the hard data. We received the raw data today, and we look to get the board and our community a more polished version of the data by the end of the week so that you can see more in depth what our community was asking for. So as we move into our phases, you know, one of the things to look at is where are we at? So our initial phase was June 1st. That was June 1st through the 30th. At that time, we were working under a lot of mandates from both our local and our state government where you talk about the Phase 1 reentry. And just to let you know, our phases are based on employee groups. They're not going to coincide with Wyandotte County. So this was when we had to get essential personnel in. So our year-round employees that were needed onsite were here daily. They came in, of course, took care of their job duties while a number of our other employees worked remotely and generally from home. We also did call in essential employees. Examples of this might be if Miguel Martin needed some mechanics to come in and fix a bus because we had an inspection coming up in July, he would bring them in at this time, even if they weren't on contract. So we would come in and get that taken care of. We also put some safety mitigation protocol in place. If you look at that, we have screenings. So we have a QR code as you walk in the door. The supervisors are checking daily health logs. And we also have a written copy of this survey, which is the same one you would fill out online for all employees. This lets us know if they have any COVID-type systems, and they have a process that will send home to them, and they know to report, go back to their car, report home. Their supervisor then follows up with them after this. Some other things we looked at were different types of training and modifications. So now every employee before they come back to work has to complete a frontline training, and that's COVID-19 and how to stay safe. We now know a little more just through the CDC and the different things we're hearing through, you know, our local government and other reports about how this disease is spread. So in watching this video, it talks to our employees about how to stay safe. We've also added another three videos that they can watch if they choose to, along with the modifications. And we have a picture of that over there. We have the countertop protective shields. One of the ways we know the disease is passed is through a close conversation. If I get close to you and we get into a rather heated discussion, we know that those germs are being passed from person to person. So with these shields, it gives us an opportunity to continue dialogue, healthy dialogue, and really mitigate the opportunity for the spread of the disease. Here's what we heard from our employees as we looked at the over 2,000 surveys that came in, and thank you to DERA for breaking down that data. We knew that certain things from the CDC had to go along with their wishes. So we started practices of social distancing. Hand sanitizer, it is generally literally available around every quarter. If you walk in our buildings, you see it everywhere. We're providing face masks as people walk in. The most, the majority of our employees do come with a face mask, but if they do forget one, we do have one here for them. Daily temperature checks. Facilities has bought a number of machines that we can use. You go in, you get in front of them. It kind of looks like the old Star Trek where you're getting beamed up, and it gives you a temperature within 30 seconds. As listed before, the staff screenings, the health logs, the mandatory training. And the other thing to remember is although there are limited visitors at this point, they as well as vendors are going to follow the same protocols when entering any of our sites. And that's what Phase 1 looked like. So as we move into Phase 2, which will start July 1st, you're now seeing a return of more employees. So what you're seeing is a lot of our year-round employees that were working remotely are now starting to report back to the office. We have the different employee groups listed, so that would later include principals, assistant principals, and some school-based staff that works longer than, you know, your school calendar, your types of contract. They're going to continue with the screenings. They will still have access to the QR code. Supervisors will still be looking at daily health logs. As previously discussed, there's workplace modifications. But one of the biggest things you see here is you see the sanitizer and you see the masks. We know mitigation is our best, is our best defense as, you know, we start returning to the workplace and whatever our new normal begins to look like. Here's where we actually start talking about the majority of our people. So this is where Phase 3 starts. It's August 1st through August 12th. We have our teachers, our school-based staff, nurses, and other employee groups that will be returning, a number of nutritional services amongst others. And this is where our educational options come in. So option A, and I'll explain these a little further as we get into these next slide, would be all students returning to a campus with mitigation practices. This does align with the guidance we've been given by the county and also by the state. Option B, most students would be on campus, but some families, they would choose to participate in an online learning environment. So they would do a continuous learning plan. We've been working with Student Services, TIS, as well as, of course, you always forget when you're in the middle of a presentation, communication to look at number one, how we would get information out, and then number two, how can you use our current student information system in infinite campus to where families could do a check mark in one of those boxes, and they would be able to let us know what type of system that they're looking for as far as education. Option C is the one that we became a little too familiar with over the last few months. That's where you have all students working in a continuous learning environment from their household. That would happen again if we had the governor again telling us all buildings were shutting down. If we had a hotspot, which would be a building where you had a large number of cases, we had to shut that down. This option is available for those emergency situations so that there isn't a stop to student education. And with you guys thankfully doing the exemption in the spring, we know that our students do have technology, so we could go to that option if need be. So option A, when we look at this, there's some mitigation practices that will go on at all campuses. As we previously discussed, hand sanitizers available, we're going to have masks, and we've already made this purchase. So there's going to be two masks available for each employee, two masks available for each student. Same thing with the temperature checks. We're going to have the screening and health logs, mandatory training when our employees return. One of the biggest differences, though, is we're going to have designated entry and exit points for staff and students. One of the things through the CDC's guidance was keeping light groups of people together to mitigate the possible spread of the disease. Visitors and vendors will still continue to follow all protocols that we run through the district. My favorite subject is up next, lunch. It still is my favorite subject. So one of the things as we look at what we're doing this school year is we're going to be structured how lunch is done. Our nutritional service, well, they will have a hot lunch for every student, and Josh and his team will be working with building principals, the IIOs amongst other departments, and looking how to provide lunches in the safest possible way to all students, as well as staying within those county and state guidelines of as many light groups or educational grade levels together. This will happen. This will also be done with passing periods. Each building is being looked at individually because an elementary school of 300 kids is going to look significantly different than a high school of 1,800. So as these different entities, so facilities would be involved in that discussion as well. As these discussions move forward, we're going to come up with the best route of keeping students and staff safe. Facilities, we got our routine disinfecting and cleaning by our custodial staff. They're also going to help the academics team and the schools by setting up the classroom in a manner that's going to follow CDC guidelines. So we're going to do, follow everything we can in the best way possible. Our buses, we know that, you know, a large percentage of our students ride the bus to school daily. So one of the things that we will be doing is limiting bus occupancy by adding more routes. And I'll answer this question before it's potentially asked. No, we won't be hiring more people, but Miguel and his team will be reallocating drivers in order to make sure there's less students on the buses. The other thing that will happen is they'll have loading and unloading procedures. In doing so, this will also mitigate, mitigate the risk of students contracting COVID. So option B. So option B would have all the mitigation purposes of option A, but the biggest thing is the plan would be that the majority of our students would be at the school site with a number of our families choosing an online option. What this will do is have some students and staff engage in a continuous learning process, similar to what they were doing during March through May, and specific groups of teachers will teach virtually. That process will be set up, and that'll actually be a job we'll have to look into with the number of families that choose this option. So right now, we couldn't say X amount of teachers would do it or wouldn't. We would have to look at specifically how many families would have an interest in that type of education. And that would directly play into what the FTE or personnel would be needed in order to make this happen. Option C, once again, that's our break glass in case of emergency, the one that we would prefer not to see at any point, but just in case it were. We would go back to a number of the things we were doing previously. Your essential personnel are showing up, students working from home. As students enroll, they receive, you know, the technology they need. One major difference is going to be is KSDE is sending some guidance documents in July. That'll have what the competencies are for the different grade levels. Those will now be embedded in our online plan. And classified personnel will be reassigned so that we can continue employment through this type of action. So I'm going to make this a little larger so you guys can see it, hopefully can see it. When we look at this quite honestly, option A in a perfect world is your most equitable. You have all students in front of a teacher with the brand-new curriculums that were approved and a lot of the professional development that's going on this summer. We have listed a lot of the things that were talked about and option, you know, on the option A slide, but that's on paper. That's your most equitable. Reality is, we do have parents that are wanting option B. We do have a number of parents that are looking at an online type of education for their students. So in to meet the needs of all students, potentially, we would need to have both of those options going on simultaneously. The other thing to look at from an equity lens as we look at this is how we would set that up. I know there's been talk of different day on, day off, week on, week off. But one thing that in the task force we did talk about is because of the diversity of the workforce in Kansas City, Kansas, you have a lot of parents that work every day and may or may not be able to do something with childcare if it's one day on, one day off, or one week on or one week off. But we would still want to look at some type of online option to meet our parents and our students' needs. The last one is previously discussed is break in case of danger. You know, we hope to not end up at that point where we have a hotspot or that we get the government or the county letting us know that we have to shut down. The other thing is, this was just released yesterday, so I do apologize we couldn't include it in the PREZI we sent to you guys on Friday, but this is from the, this is from Wyandotte County, the Restart Wyco. So it's our local school districts, including us, the community college, unified government. And if you look at the different pieces that are in here, they're all aligning to what we're planning to do within our educational plans. So we're ensuring that we're meeting all guidelines that are being given to us by both local and state government. One thing that is in there that we didn't previously talk about is athletics will continue. So if your students are athletes or enjoy activities, those will still go on as guided percussion. If we were to get into another scenario like the spring and everything was shut down, then of course that would go away. But at this time, even if a student is doing online learning, they are eligible as long as they meet eligibility standards to remain in activities. So now we get to the fun stuff. What would our next steps have to be? So at some point, this is an informational item, but at some point, the Board of Education would have to approve an educational option. When this happens, district staff and parents will be informed of the educational option and work plan to let you know the teams that are working under this task force. They have a number of documents already being put together. The communications team is working on this. And our academics team, facilities, and the other groups under that are working on different plans to meet the needs of all three. There's going to have to be some revisions of the continuous learning plan. And that's what I talked about with the KSDE guidelines. But, you know, we have a great team with our academics department. They're going to work hard and collaborate with the schools and teachers and do so. HR will work to realign staff to ensure that every student's educational needs are met. The operations team will ensure that facilities, transportation, and resources are ready. And there's potentially going to need some B to some board approvals. I'll start with the second one first. The educational devices right now, I believe our policy is that only high school students can take devices home. But I know the board made an action in the spring to ensure that K through 12 students could. There would probably need to be an extension of that, just to ensure that if we hit another wave, we would have that available for all families. And then with the additional routes, there would be a particular area that would have a bus zone that would become a walk zone. So we want to be very transparent about that because that would be part of the plan. This is part, this is how we would reach out to families and community. We have our different medians of communication. We use a number of these right now. Looking at the parent survey, to be very honest with you, the top three answers of how they like to be communicated with, at least these respondents, was text number one, phone call number two, and email number three. So it was pretty interesting to see those results and see what they, what they had to say about it. So that's what we have to, before we get to any questions, we just want to let you know, just reiterate that we are looking at all those plans more in depthly, and the different teams are working on plans for all three of those educational options. Kelly, would you like to add anything before questions?
No, thank you. That was good.
So are there any questions?
This is Stacy. Dr. Jaeger, I do have a couple. Stephen, thank you so much for the information that you've included, and I look forward to seeing the parent results and surveys to see what the parents think, to get more insight in it. I do have a couple of questions for you. So you mentioned in the beginning that this is our plan and they may not mimic the other plans of the schools within Wyandotte County. Have we thought about how we could be consistent with them or how to, how we could align with them because we know that some of our parents may work, live in those areas and they have kids such and other teachers may have kids outside the district. So balancing how their school does for their kids may, will have an impact on how, you know, they could be effective at teaching our kids. Just wondered if that information had been explored?
It has. I can answer that one. So the four of us, the four superintendents do talk, and we've had principal from our district also on there. When they speak about mimicking, it's more so, for instance, like at a high school, some of them are thinking that they may be able to do an AB schedule where some students are in on one day, some are out on another day. We were saying like for our schools that have, you know, some of our schools have 1,700 kids, 1,600 kids. There's no way to run, we don't know how. And we had our principal on there. We can actually say, we had Mary. Mary was part of the team of the superintendents, and we couldn't come up with a way of how that works successfully. They have one high school, I think maybe two middle schools and like three elementary, where we have almost 30 elementary, eight middle, five to six high schools. And so ours was a little different. So we talked about the mimicking. It was more so on that. And then we were also considering parents who are teachers. And so if a child is in school and it's an AB day, what does the parent do with the child when they aren't in school? Who's supposed to care for that child? So we were, those were questions that we were having, but no one has come to a solid finding of how to actually do it. And we're all, that's why when we actually stopped and went to the state and said, we need to get some more guidance from the state, although the state, they're not going to tell us about how to do an AB schedule, and A meaning some kids come to school, some go out. The other thing is that they were talking about how, you know, kids could walk to school and come off the buses. So those were things that we couldn't actually satisfy because we were taking those into consideration. We are putting, making, encouraging parents to bring their kids to school. I mean, we can encourage it, but we know that not all of our parents are able to get their children to school, and that's why we have, you know, we provide our buses. So those were just some of the things that would be different. But when we talk about the overarching plan, the overarching plan is succinct.
Okay, great. My next question is, you know, when we think about schools and having a half day maybe in the school or half day at home, that can get quite touchy. So when, say for instance, I as a parent and I say, okay, I want my kids to go, and then maybe something happens and I say, oh, well, I want them to stay online. Well, parents have that flexibility to switch if they wanted their kids to go and then they wanted virtual to switch if they wanted their kids to go and then they wanted virtual? Or how does that look? Have we looked, thought about that yet?
So we're looking within the group, uh, our academics team that Matt is heading up with the schools, he's a team leader, are looking at all those options and how they would look. And then they communicate that with transportation because as Dr. Faust mentioned, a large number of our students do ride the bus. And we're looking at feasibility. Um, and then we'd also have to look at how would that look at from a human capital perspective? And how would that work with our teachers? So would they have to do part of the day in person? Would they do part of the day then on the computer? So there'd be a bunch, there'd be a lot of things that we're still investigating and digging deeper into. So we're coming up with those answers.
Okay, great. Last thing, SPED. You know, SPED is near and dear to many of our hearts. So um, would there be a different plan for SPED? On how we're supporting students? Because right now in our plan, you know, um, the state of Kansas required that we keep our hours for our SPED students. Um, are we going to have a separate plan, not separate per se, but a different action plan for our SPED students? Um, just to help because if parents don't want to send their kids and do virtual, I'm just concerned about how we can help support them because they may not have the skills needed to support their child. And and that, that was my last question.
Yes, that is a very good question. So we actually have a separate committee, lots of committees. Um, that, that, you know, we're working on, um, what does it look like to offer teletherapy? You know, what does it look like to be able to continue, as I like to say, the work of special education? So what does it look like to be able to continue evaluations in person? You know, for us, we believe that the, our students with disabilities are already the most vulnerable students. And they are more prone to regression um, than any other group of students. So for us, we want to be able to get them back in school. Um, and so of course, if parents feel like they don't, then we want to be able to have that option as well. And the option would be to be able to provide teletherapy, you know, if it's speech and language therapy and so forth and so on. But the goal is definitely to immerse them into the district's plan. Um, to get them back into the school setting. And then if we have to go to Plan Three, to be able to have a plan where we're still able to conduct evaluations, um, just in in smaller numbers, right? Um, we're still able to provide services.
Great, thank you.
Uh, this is Wanda finally.
Wait, Wanda.
Okay, my first question, I I saw where Wyandotte County said recommend. And it, we didn't say recommend or mandatory, but are we going to require that everyone wear a mask?
So we did discuss that. Mr. Rohin, would you like to chime in? I know you were part of that discussion.
There's also some language in the phase that we put in there. So we, when we spoke with um the health director, the health director, we're going to follow whatever the health director puts out. And the four school districts did um, put that in, um, it's in there. I have to get their new plan. The one that we sent out to the board on Monday, whatever's in that plan when it resides to um, mask, that's the one that we would follow.
But I didn't see what, what we
It should be in there.
It, it didn't say it was required. It just said person would get two masks. But you know, in lieu of Wyandotte County being a hotspot and the state of Kansas being one of those twenty-one states that they're talking about nationally on the news. You think, I'm just saying, I'm just asking. You know, you would think we would make it mandatory.
And again, so not the one, not this one that we had, it was the one that was sent on Monday. So I will get that, I will, I can read that one really quickly um, to make sure I have the correct language, but the um health director actually gave us insight on that one.
Okay, I saw that. All I saw was recommend, but I, I, again, I'm just asking, you would think if you want to cut the cases down, you would make it mandatory, but I, I understand. But I just wanted to make sure I heard that. And then my second question is, temperature checks, who's going to do that? If we're saying we're doing it, who's responsible for that?
So that's going to be a collaboration between the schools. So I'll give you example at the schools, between the schools and facilities. So Mr. Covington's department has been buying those machines so that we'll have those, the students come into buildings. And that's where that'll be taking place, just like at a secondary school, you would go through the metal detector. It'd be that same type of process.
So the, while they're going through the metal detector, they're getting a temperature checked at the same time.
No, no, you stand in front of the machine. There's a machine, there's actual temperature, a thermometer that you stand in front of and you put your face in front of it and it'll take it for you. Um, but also in that PPE statement, it says that mask face covers are recommended. Employee visitors and students may be required to wear masks. Remember, this is, um, whatever the board says, we will go with it. Um, but we were getting direction from the health department. And so they did say it in there, employees, visitors, students may be required to wear the mask.
Okay, no, I, I read that. I just, it said maybe, so I didn't know, you were thinking, Lou, what's going on? It wouldn't be kind of loosey goosey, but I'm just asking for clarity. And there's nothing like a good understanding. My other question, under custodial staff, it used the word routine. Now, how many times are they cleaning? What do you mean by routine? That's real vague to me.
So Mr. Clemens, would you like to answer that question? Or Ms. Miller?
Mr. Clemens, you're muted.
There we go. Not going to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, routine, meaning that we're going to maintain our our daily cleaning like we always do, but then also adding uh, uh, those steps of uh, cleaning all the touch points, disinfecting per the CDC recommendations as we can throughout the day.
And I guess the reason I asked that, I taught for thirty years. We didn't have enough to me janitorial personnel when I was there. And then with this, I just question whether that's going to be done effectively because I don't see you having the manpower. It's just my opinion.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I understand, and we, we did discuss this a little bit last time, that um, I think we can uh, shift some of our resources. Uh, we are looking at some other plans to give some support, particularly to the daytime custodial staff uh, to help them with all of those processes. So I, I'm fairly comfortable that we'll get that taken care of. And we're still working through all those uh, processes and getting those plans together.
And then on the clean, I also noticed when I went to visit a lot of the schools, are we still going to allow, I, I get the, want to have the pillows and all the little special rugs and all that stuff to make reading comfortable, but it could be a germ carrier because we do have some issues. So are they going to allow that? Because if we're trying to keep everybody safe, and I get trying to make it fuzzy and loving and all that's beautiful, but it can also create some health hazards.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'd like to, and that's a conversation that I probably need to have as ongoing conversations as we're working together collaboratively with the building administrators. I would like to minimize that as much as possible, but our cleaning disinfectants that we use are uh, compatible with use on soft surfaces. So we'll be, particularly like the little ABC rugs in the younger classrooms, we'll be spraying those down with uh, disinfectants each night. Uh, and that's the thing to try to keep our classrooms as uh, environmentally safe as we can.
And then if we talk about social distancing, when you got twenty-five to thirty kids in a room, how does that work? Can somebody help me understand that? And when we're supposed to be six feet apart, how is that going to work? We have all these desks, we have all these kids. I'd just like to know how we do that.
I was going to say, sorry, I got to take this one out. Um, along with what Doug was saying about social distancing, um, part of the work that we'll do with buildings is provide guidance on how to set up classrooms, making sure that um, according to CDC, that we try to adhere to social distancing as best as possible. So spreading desks out, all facing one direction is our goal. Um, we're also working with our plan team to ensure that we have options for um limiting the amount of students in classrooms. So there may be some things that we have to consider as well.
Okay, because when I retired, I averaged thirty to thirty-five. We had them all going with, but it wasn't social distancing. So I was just trying to figure out, how do you do that? I don't see that. And have you been in some of these rooms? They're not real big.
They are not.
But I, you know, I just want you to please keep that in mind because we want the kids to be safe. And I just question how we're doing that. And and that keeps running through my mind with all the desks. Do we have enough people to clean? It gets a little scary.
Yes, ma'am. We will keep that in mind and we appreciate the feedback and that will help us with future planning.
One other question, if a kid comes, he's sick, what happens if my temperature is a hundred and seven? To the, the student or the staff, what happens next? Where do they go?
So Elizabeth, if you want to take that one, Ms. Morse?
Sure. Good evening. Um, so if we do have a student that we identify as um, being, having a fever or potentially symptomatic, um, then they would be immediately taken to the nurse. And the nurse would have an area that would um be separate from any other students that might be in that um, nurse's office. And then we would do our assessment, um, as all nurses do and make contact with the parents so that that child could be picked up as soon as possible.
Can I piggyback on that question? What happens if we have a child that does not have a temperature? They go through the day, you get results back a week later that they, they have the virus and they've been in the school. And I'm particularly looking at phase, I'm sorry, at uh, letter A or the first plan where we've been here all week long. We've been here together. There's no separation in who we are. What happens with that school?
Um, I've been working closely with um, the health department throughout um, the pandemic. And so um, anytime that we would have a question like that, we would um, immediately be in contact with them so that they would give us the guidance on what would be our next steps.
Well, what usually happens to, you know, is there already a protocol established, you would think? Because in the workplace, so if a staff comes in, a student comes in, what happens? Can you give us tentatively what you know or what might happen? Because we had it happen in our main office. When they came in, things were shut down. So now we're talking about going back. So what happens?
So we wouldn't have any way of knowing if they were, um, had tested positive, obviously, until after the fact and the health department would notify us in, in that case. And then they would give us the guidelines um, on what would be the best course of action. If we have a student who comes and is um, just has a fever or has any other symptoms, um, then we would be in, in touch with custodians to disinfect the area as soon as possible. And then again, the health department would give us the guidance on if we needed to close a building or a classroom.
This is Valdina. I guess I'll, I'll continue that line of thinking, Ms. Morse. I remember seeing, I think it was Channel Four, that on the twenty-second of June, uh, the UG Health Department said that they were seriously considering, quote, issuing a public health order that would require face coverings to be worn in all schools. Um, and then I think Mr. Uh, well, Matthew said he would, we would try, try to adhere to social distancing, but and in your conversation, why wouldn't we take the temperature before they get on the bus? And maybe rhetorical question, but why would we allow them to infect the other students on the bus? Then when they get to school, we find out that they have a temperature, something to consider. Maybe, maybe we're waiting too long to take the temperatures. Have you considered that?
Dr. Nguyen, we'll take that feedback back to the group and that's something we can definitely look at.
Secondly, uh, how many parents filled out the survey?
Over, it was roughly twenty-two hundred, so twenty-one eighty-eight, I believe.
And then why, why is there no mentioning of hand washing? But hand sanitizing, why not hand washing? Where, where, that doesn't come into play? Why, why haven't we included that in a, the daily activity of, of the students?
Now, can I take that? I think that we probably uh, can put something in the plan, but that will be a continued uh step, at least in the buildings. We, we've posted uh, some of the posters provided by the CDC to encourage uh, continuous hand washing by the kids. And again, that's going to be, have to be a kind of a collaborative effort with the building administrator and teachers to really kind of increase those efforts. So that's uh, some, some input from them, but I think that is uh, uh, maybe we need to make it spill out specifically, but I think that's part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
This is one finally came again. In regard to the, if, if I choose to go the continuous learning route and I don't have the hotspots, then will they then create a packet for me? Because some people thought they got the laptops, but they needed some other things in order to make it work. And we didn't necessarily provide that. So will there be that alternative for those individuals who don't have the technology? Will we have learning package for them?
Yes, ma'am. We will provide those.
Because I think they need, we got to be honest about that, that in order to get the laptop, you need the technology. If you don't have the technology, then you got to go to Plan B, which is some sort of packet. And I think some people took us literally that everyone's getting a laptop. Well, you got to have the technology. If you don't have it, then you can't do it. So we need to make sure that they're aware that certain things you got to have. And if you don't have it, then you pick the alternative, which is the packet. Now, we'd love for them all to have it, but if they don't, they don't.
We will definitely include that feedback. Thank you.
This is Yolanda, and I think somebody asked this question before, and I have been involved in some of the conversations, definitely not all of the conversations at all. So one of the questions I think was asked is what are our other schools or our surrounding schools doing? I am completely, uh, I believe in being flexible and agile and innovative and all of those things, but I think we need to take in consideration what some of our other schools are doing. So do we, can I get an answer on surrounding schools or comparison schools?
So we looked, we looked at actually some of our neighbors. So Blue Valley School District sent something out that has very similar options to what we're looking to do. So they had something similar with an online option as well as the in-person option like we did.
I'm going to stop you there. When you say sim, I'm going to stop you there. When you say similar, what was the difference?
Um, they actually didn't get deep into their plan either. They were actually releasing the options to get parent feedback at this point.
Thank you. And then what were the others? Well, what, what were the other differences? I hear what we're doing, but what are other school districts saying? You know, we're looking at this too.
So we've looked at Denver Public Schools, we looked at Dallas, we've looked at Maryland. And they're looking at very similar options to what we're looking to do. Our county and the work that Dr. Faust and the superintendents have worked on is very similar to what's going on nationally. So they're looking at both in-seat as well as online options. And a lot of places are still bringing plans out. They're in the parent survey phase at the moment like we are and just finishing that up. And now they're having their academics teams actually come back to the board, look at what particular plan is going to, you know, be presented and then going forward from there.
Okay, so then my other question, definitely I'm interested in what our parents are saying. And I don't think, I don't know, in those questions, are we asking parents to kind of check with our students? That's one of my questions. And then my other question is, are we hearing any other school district even considering bringing everybody back? I mean, because when I hear that as a, as a, it makes me a little bit nervous. Like that's part of it, bringing everybody back.
So across the, across the state of Kansas, we, we sit on a call with Dr. Watson weekly. And there are numerous districts, and now granted, every district's a little different. Rural districts have different needs than an urban district. But the districts are all looking at different types of plans and giving that option back to parents to have that onsite uh, education going on. So every district is offering that option.
Okay, I'm a, I am, I'm definitely not being nitpicky, but I am big on words. So when I hear definitely hearing that option, I really am trying to get kind of some more hard answers. And when we're doing some comparisons with other districts, what does that mean? Are we hearing that they're really looking at saying, we're going to bring everybody back into school and that is a true option?
So that is an option. Every school district is looking at option A of bringing everybody back and putting them in a seat. And then it goes from there. So then that's, of course, you know, that's going to be your So then that's, of course, you know, that's going to be your first option. Then they're putting the other options out there where some are going to seat, some are saying virtual. Um, and then we have to have the other option if the um, pandemic comes and the health department shuts us down. C is um, where we are at home and we're doing the virtual. So those are the only three options that several school districts are, are doing. And when I say several, I mean around the nation within. Um, no one has the golden ticket.
Yep.
Because it just keeps floating, honestly. Um, and so what we're doing now is just providing insight and taking your questions and then going back. What we will do is then take those back, and when we get on the calls with the other superintendents, um, with the state departments, we call and we say, okay, what are your answers? Or what can we do to, to do this? I mean, of course, no, again, like I said, no one has a, um, the best answer.
Yep, and I agree, and I, I hear that. So I think about um, education equality too. So that, that's one of the things that, that just keeps sticking out in my head. And so when I, when I also consider saying, okay, um, if we do, if we're looking at A, because, you know, we want our parents to have daycare and so on and so forth, well, we have an outbreak in the school, and I've seen a lot of places where everybody must go, um, then now we've put our parents back in that position as well, and we've impacted everybody in that school. So I, that is something that it makes me a little bit nervous versus some type of rotation. And then how do we use our resources? And I understand that there is expenses involved, and parents have to work, and all those other things. But it also makes me wonder, what does that option look like for us? And how, how can we be resources to our parents if, if we look at that as being an option? That's it.
And we will definitely, yeah, and Ms. Clark, we'll definitely investigate all of that and look deeper into it. Thank you for your feedback.
Steven, this is Stacy again. Um, have we heard anything about Kids Own or any of the support arranging around um, aftercare? Have we, have we heard if there is going to be an offering for that? If not, that's okay. That's just something to consider as well. Um, because if our parents are working, there may be a need for aftercare and how that will look as well.
So within, Lisa Garcia Stewart is looking at all of that with the student services and looking to see how that could potentially look within the different options.
And Steven, let me, um, you're going to, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
You going to answer that? I didn't want to cut you off.
I, I was. I was just going to share with Dr. Yeager that um, our coordinator of Kids Own will be in a meeting on Thursday with other, uh, before and after kids. I'll talk about what that looks like. So we've been working the last three weeks on um, combining a couple of options for our students, and they'll have a meeting so we can finalize that plan, because we're thinking about supporting our families in the community.
Would Kids Own be open to everyone?
Right now, we're thinking of options that align with the options that Mr. Lingus just presented, but we'll have some additional information after the meeting that they're having with other Kids Own program on Thursday with KSD.
Okay, thank you. Let me interrupt and say that we got a lot that we need to cover. So I'm going to ask board members to uh, write your questions down and then submit them to uh, Mr. Lingus and Ms. Tishman, and that way we can make sure that we can get a response. To keep in mind that we're, they're presenting an, an option for us to be able to use. Not that it's locked in, but we want to make sure that we cover our bases with everything. So hopefully, uh, we as a board will make a decision that would be best for all of our students once uh, time passes on and we get the information accordingly.
Ma'am, this is, this is Randy. Thank you. Um, can I just, fifteen seconds, because I'm the only one that hasn't asked anything.
Uh, I really would like for you to write your question down, because again, we have a lot on our, on our agenda for tonight.
I, I just want it on public record in terms of, uh, because if I, I know if I email, it doesn't always get sent to, to everyone. So I just want it on public record. Um, Curious Shiny Mission recently this week pushed their start date back to August seventeenth in order to provide training for their teachers. I'm wondering if we've considered that. Secondly, um, have, what, and you may have mentioned this about teachers who may not want to come back because they might be immunocompromised. What are we doing with those teachers to provide the, the resources for them um, to continue teaching? I really am concerned about the overflow in the classrooms with classes being overcrowded, about passing periods. Um, when you have hundreds of students going through passing periods and potentially being in contact with, with others, what's the plan for that? Um, I really don't want to give up on the A/B schedule quite yet. Maybe we can look into that a little bit further uh, before we cut it out exactly. Um, protocols, making sure we do have protocols in place um, for if something does happen, where we do have um, someone who is positive or, or potentially positive. Um, and then um, if teachers do get sick the day of, how, how um, present will subs be? Or how, how readily available will subs be for those teachers who do run a fever in the middle of, of the day or whatnot? So anyways, so I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, anyone else? Anyone else, please submit your questions. And that way, at another meeting, we can answer those questions publicly so that everyone will know.
Thank you for your work. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're ready for the next one.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept, as an informational term, uh, item, a report on the Nephers Connector as submitted by Lisa Walker, Executive Director of Federal Programs, Dennis Covington, Chief Finance Officer, and recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Madam President, Board, and Dr. Faust. I'm here as a follow-up to Dr. Bill Bol Irvin's presentation last week, where she shared the end-of-year outcomes for the Diploma Plus program.
Tonight, I'm sharing an informational report on our district's plan to continue the development of the Diploma Plus program through the expansion of the Nephers Connector resource.
A little bit of background information on the Nephers Connector. The Nephers Connector is an online Zoom-like platform that enables teachers to connect students with industry professionals and college campuses to classroom instruction. These virtual sessions align to the Kansas College and Career Ready State standards, and they include instructional activities such as topic presentations from all career areas, but especially theme-related, industry chats, college and career readiness sessions with college professors and students, project-based learning connections over extended period of time as the projects are running out over several weeks, project mentoring for feedback and assistance during development and research, and project evaluations such as Shark Tank simulations. In addition to these live, interactive instructional activities, all sessions are recorded, and so teachers also have access to a video library now of over ninety-four hundred sessions, which can be searched by grade level, content, keywords, or the Kansas State standards. So some district opportunities for us with this expansion. Our secondary schools have had access to the Nephers Connector for the past two years through the Diploma Plus MOU with Prep KC. And Prep KC includes the Nephers Connector um, as a part of their partnering with secondary schools. And so as a result of that, forty-two of our KCKPS teachers have earned the Level One certification using the Nephers Connector, and four teachers have earned the Level Two certification. So our Diploma Plus team is interested in expanding the connector to our elementary classrooms to strengthen the post-secondary pipeline and the number of students who are able to acquire those market value assets that Dr. Bilbo Irvin spoke about last week during that end-of-year Diploma Plus report. Additionally, some of our elementary principals, teachers, and counselors have expressed an interest in having access to this resource to embed career fairs in weekly instruction and expose students to a variety of college and career opportunities. We think this early introduction can help students to determine their area of interest as they start to work towards their individualized learning plan. And since the connector engages industry professionals on a local, national, and also international platform, it also provides increased opportunities for students to see industry professionals that are reflective of their own communities. So while individual teachers and counselors can determine the date and time that they want to connect for interactions with industry professionals, it also enables multiple classrooms to connect at one time. So for example, an entire grade level in a building could be on an industry chat without having to move to a larger space. And with all of our elementary schools having the connector, our district CNI team can build in live or recorded sessions into our district guaranteed viable curriculum. And this strategic approach will enable then all students at a particular grade level across the district to participate in a real-world, world-learning activity aligned to our state standards. So what would be the district plan for this expansion? Expansion to elementary schools will require that the district enter into a service agreement with Nephers. The Nephers Connector site licenses include unlimited campus-wide access for each certified staff member at each site, and the cost would be fifteen hundred dollars per campus. And that is a discounted fee for schools, since we are a Prep KC partner district. Normally, those annual site licenses would run thirty-five hundred dollars per campus. So how would we fund this program? The district receives a Title IV A Student Support and Academic Enrichment Federal Grant. And that grant requires that funds be spent in the three categories that you see on the screen. The Nephers Connector online platform does align instruction to funding in two of those required spending categories, and those would be well-rounded education and technology. And using the Title IV grant funds to provide district-wide access supports our district's focus on equity for all students, regardless of their zip codes, since taking this district-wide approach would ensure that all elementary teachers and students have access to this particular resource. So one of the other things that we always want to think about when we're looking at the um, a resource is aligning that with district and state frameworks. And so when we crosswalk the expansion of the Nephers Connector, we see that there is a strong alignment with this resource supporting identified goals and focus areas across both the district and state frameworks. And while the most obvious benefit is probably extending college and career readiness to elementary students, equally important benefits are supporting our focus on diversity and equity as students interact with industry professionals both locally and internationally. This expands their opportunities to connect with multiple professionals that are reflective of our community. And it's a tremendous benefit. Um, when our students can see it, they're more likely to be it when we think about that mindset sometimes that helps them to really envision where they want to go. The connector provides the opportunity to participate in multiple virtual field trips to college campuses, both locally and nationwide. So this could include those HBCUs, which helps to plant seeds early on for post-secondary plans. And because it is a virtual platform, the connector would be a sustainable resource that can be used regardless of whether or not we're in a traditional school setting in the coming year, or we move to some type of a blended or fully remote continuous learning plan. So that concludes my informational report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
This is Janie Humphries. I have a couple of questions for you. Do all of our secondary's uh, program, do all of our secondary schools use this program?
Um, I would, I'd have to get some details for you on that. I can tell you that the three highest users are Arrowhead, Eisenhower, and Wyandotte.
And have they found it to be pretty effective with their students?
I believe they would answer yes to that, but I could get more details.
Lisa, I, I can jump in um, here if you would like. And so, yes, the connector is available and used to all of our middle and high school students at this time. And I do have that, um, we have some of the top users. Some of our teachers are some of the top users of the connector in the KC metro area. So thirty-eight KCK teachers attended eighty-six connector sessions this year. And KCK students spent two thousand five hundred and eighty minutes chatting and learning with um, industry professionals through the connector. Um, and just uh, some teacher feedback as far as the connector is concerned. The connector gives students an opportunity to interact with someone who has firsthand knowledge of the career, a more meaningful activity than just reading about a career from a book or an article. It becomes a more personal and intimate when there's a living person on the other end of the investigation into careers. That's from Mr. Matthew Mortensen at Eisenhower. Also, another statement from a teacher. It gives students the opportunity to answer the question, why am I learning this? When a professional can explain how they use skills and knowledge daily in their field, students can connect what they are learning in middle school to their future dreams and careers. It is also inspiring and engaging for our students to have those conversations via the connector platform. And that's from Ms. Cindy Thompson, who works at both Eisenhower and Arrowhead. And so our, our secondary teachers have had great experiences with the connector. Um, and we are really hoping to uh, make sure that our elementary students can take part and start in the early on um, education about college and career readiness.
Have any other elementary schools uh, used this program before, or do you know?
I know some elementary schools on the Missouri side that have used the connector very successfully for college and career fairs that they can do on a weekly basis and to connect with industry professionals.
Okay. Uh, my only other concern is that uh, Nephers says that they uh, don't retain any student images, because they say they record everything. But it does say that companies record their sessions. Now, do, is there some kind of uh, agreement where the companies do not retain any of the student images also? To respect the privacy of our students?
Yes, they do not retain any of the student images, and we can also sign waivers if we wish not to have it recorded. They're primarily recording their industry professional delivering their content information so that they can keep that for their um, business.
Okay, and, and the parents know that their students are online with the industry professionals and stuff and are participating in this program?
Mm-hmm.
And Lisa and LaShonda, just for clarification, it's not a one-to-one where a student is on there. It's a whole class?
These are group sessions, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but we have, we have some parents that are a little bit um, nervous about their kids being photographed or being on, online and stuff. I just wanted to make sure the parents were informed about the program. It sounds very exciting for the kids to have that experience of speaking with someone who's actually out there in the workforce and getting that, like you said, that personal connection. So thank you for the information.
Uh, Lisa, this is Wanda Brown and Kaye. Is there some way through professional development that we can figure out a way to get more people to get involved with this? It's a good program, but it seems like we need to, if there's thirty-eight in the three main schools on the secondary level, or Arrowhead, Eisenhower, and Wyandotte, we're spending a lot of money, and this is something we're pushing, we want the kids to do. It's available. Then maybe we need to go back and have a professional development set and redo this and remind people that it's here, it's available. We need to tap into it, because it doesn't make sense that only three schools are really using it.
Sure. Well, of course, I gave you the three highest users.
And I know Dr. Bilbo Irvin would have more statistics for all of our schools, but you, of course, raise a good point. Um, it always takes learning on how to use a new system. And so that is planned and uh, implementation. And I know Dr. Bilbo Irvin and I have talked about how her team can support that, as well as our counselors. There are also professional development staff members available through Nephers that can help online with teachers um, on an as-needed basis. Um, so we definitely will continue to look at that, because of course, we want it to be used, right? Access is one thing, and using it is the second thing.
And if we, I'm not saying we're going to continuous learning, but here's another tool that you could utilize, that they're looking for things to do and how to make it work with your class, and this would be excellent.
Absolutely, we agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maxine, you're on mute.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational term, or, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Educational proposal change to the Student Code of Conduct as submitted by Lisa Garcia, Director of Student Services, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Board, Madam President, Dr. Faust. I'll just share my screen so you can see that. Um, I made it before you this evening for the second read for the Code of Um, I made it before you this evening for the second read for the Code of Conduct and would propose that until there can be a further this conversation about emission, our vision, that we, I would propose that, um, we remain with inspiring excellence every grown-up, every child, every day. Um, and I put the strike through, through excellence is required. And that is all I have to present this evening since I have shared the Code of Conduct at the previous board meeting and open for any thoughts.
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept the proposed changes to the Code of Conduct.
Need to second it, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the changes for the Code of Conduct. Are there any questions?
Can we, uh, sorry, this is Randy. Um, I would just say if we're going to go back to the inspiring excellence piece, um, I would make a recommendation that we also change that language on our website and in other spaces where, um, where that's been changed, um, just so we have consistency and so we're able to, um, to make, have that conversation and make those changes. So if we're going to keep it as inspiring excellence, um, can we make those changes on, on the district website and all of the school websites and everywhere else that it's, um, where it's?
Once we approve it, it will be done.
Okay, I was just making, making sure that that was the case.
Okay.
But it hasn't been changed anywhere, is what I want to know.
It's on the district website and, um, on the presentations that were on there today and a few other place, on the school webpages, it's also been changed, so. Just for consistency's sake, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Can we go ahead and vote on this issue?
Susan, would you do the roll call vote, please? Susan, you're muted.
And let me make, um, sure that I'm clear on we're accepting the proposed changes and that they can go ahead with the printing and getting the booklet ready for students? Or are you wanting it to come back yet one more time?
It's not going, go ahead.
Before that's answered, would the Code of Conduct have to change, do any changes with the new environment or whatever may happen with this coming school year? Would there be changes based upon that?
That won't come through the Code of Conduct, it will come when I present the parent hand chime. I haven't sent it to the board yet until we can get through. Um, I'm working with Elizabeth to make sure I can have as much as possible updated information around COVID. Um, so I'll bring that to you, um, in the July meeting, but not the Code of Conduct.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure there was no crossover.
So we have to have three reads on this?
We don't have to.
You don't, you don't have to, you historically have, but you don't have to.
Okay, just for clarification, because what was in our board docs was still the yellow part. We are going back to the inspiring excellence, every grown-up, every child, every day. And, uh, yellow that was put in, that was in board docs is no longer there, correct?
Correct.
Lisa?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Just want to make sure that we, we all are on the same page. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Susan, are you clear now?
I just, I just wanted to make sure that for Ms. Garcia that she knows if she has to come back or if you're ready to go.
I recommend that we move forward so that it can get printed, so I don't think it needs to come back to us.
Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Uh, Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valden Nguyen?
Valden Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
And Ms. Drew, you said we don't need to make a formal motion to get everything changed back to the inspiring excellence that it will all be done, or do we need to make a formal motion?
I think my suggestion is that since we've already agreed to, to have that put in, that the changes will be made according to what we have voted upon.
Is that the best way to do it, Greg?
I'm not sure what you're doing, so.
Um, there, there have been changes made on websites and on printed material that say, um, excellence is required instead of inspiring excellence. Would it be cleaner to make a motion to make sure that everything is cleaned up that and says inspiring excellence, or just?
I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. I mean, you've got a, a student handbook that you just approved. Is it the board, is the board wanting as a directive that the one set of language isn't used on any district documents and the, and the different languages? And I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, um, because that's a little bit different than just approving or not approving a handbook.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that, um, that, let's see, because it's a little bit different now.
Before you make your motion, I think what we, we can look at is have a sense of professional trust in knowing that if this is an issue that has been placed on the district website and other things, that we can trust them that they're going to go back and make those changes. I don't think we need to vote on it.
I, I thought it was my understanding that we were going to talk about it further at another time. That's what my understanding was, is that we were going to be able to have time to walk all the way through it and have a discussion, to have a full conversation relating to it, not necessarily do it tonight relating to it, but that we would take time out to possibly have a full-blown discussion.
I would, I would like, I'm making a motion that until the, that until the full seven-member board along with the community, uh, meets over the next year to revisit our mission statement and the vision for our children and decide if any changes are to be made, that the inspiring excellence, every grown-up, every child, every day remains our mission, and that it shall be reflected on all of our official and unofficial communications and publications within the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and with the public, including our websites and social media, media sites.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded of the statement that Ms. Humphries has just made. Are there any questions?
I guess I need clarify.
I do have a question. Is that our mission statement?
Because that's now reflected as our mission when I'm with.
That's our mission in our board handbook.
That's the mission, but not the mission statement?
That's our mission in our, in our board handbook. Inspiring excellence, every grown-up, every child, every day. Our vision is.
So that has not changed, has it?
That, that is our mission.
But has it changed?
What do you mean?
What do you mean by that?
The mission statement has not changed at all. We haven't discussed it, we haven't had a conversation about it, so it has not changed. The only thing that has changed is that other wording has been put in. So if we have not changed it, why do we have to vote for it to be in place? All we need for those individuals who have made, uh, those other words, that have put those words in, to go back to, uh, what we want, which is inspiring excellence.
The reason I second the motion.
But our mission statement hasn't changed.
The reason I second the motion is so that we can have a broader discussion.
And I agree that we need a discussion in relation to that, but our, again, I say that our mission statement has not changed. What I would suggest that we do is we recognize that it has not changed, uh, focus on professional trust and know that what changes have been put in, our mission will be corrected on our district website and anything else that.
I want to make a motion that we table this discussion to give us.
You can have a motion on the floor.
I know.
The motion was ruled in second, let's go through it.
We're having discussion right now, Ms. Page, we're having discussion.
But she wanted another motion.
So then my question.
Already a motion on the floor.
Ms. Clark?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut Ms. Page off at all.
So, no, 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 no problem.
My, my, my question to you is, um, I, I understand professional trust, I think it need, and this is, I'm asking, what's protocol? Does it need to be stated or said out loud that we're asking that that language be removed until further discussion, which goes back to what Stacy is saying, because nothing has changed? So is that what needs to happen? And this is a question, I don't know.
Because of the essence of time.
Yep.
I hear what you're saying about trust, but for the sake of peace, can we go ahead and vote? Do it, we'll come back to it. And it's, no, I, I'm praying, because we, we're doing good tonight, y'all. Let's, let's keep the spirit going.
What I'm trying to say is if we table it, that's what it's doing.
No, no, but I'm saying for the sake of peace, because there's some uncertainty and people don't, let's just go ahead and vote it through, we'll come back to it. Because she put in her motion to come back to it, let's come back to it.
But there were stipulations in the motion, is what I'm saying. There were stipulations in the motion that, that everyone, that I say, I'm saying, let's table this discussion so we can have a full discussion. And you aren't able to table it, even if a motion is on the floor, for us to come back at another time to do it. So tabling this.
But, but I thought, okay, but I thought she said come back to it. I thought, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, tabling says we're just going to table this discussion, schedule it for another board meeting, and we can come back to fully discuss it, is, is what I'm asking.
But that is what the motion says.
Yeah, she did claim that.
That's what the motion says.
That the, the board and the community discuss over the next year whether we, to revisit, whether we need to make any changes. That's what the board and the community did before.
I mean, the motion is not threatening.
Susan, can we have the vote, please?
Of course. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, no.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valden Nguyen?
Valden Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, no.
Uh, motion passes.
Thank you all. You're ready, Dr. Faust, for the next one?
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the proposed district-wide LED lighting upgrade project with Excel Energy Group as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Madam President, before we get started, I have the purchasing director, Wayne, on the Zoom to go over the, uh, tip rules and, uh, state contracting.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Carrino.
Good evening. Uh, so, you know, any expenditures that we have to do, uh, we have to go to public bid, uh, for construction, reconstruction, remodeling, uh, materials, goods, and wares. Uh, we always have to take those to public bid, but there are exceptions that are in KSA 72, uh, 1151, safer services for copyrighted materials, motor fuels, among others. And materials are goods and wares that are purchased under cooperative agreement. The cooperative agreement, uh, saves us time. It keeps us from having to do the, uh, formal bidding process, uh, because another agency has already done the bid process for us. We are just basically piggybacking off of another agreement. It leverages the power of nationwide, uh, volume, so prices that we get using the cooperative agreement are often lower than what we could get from bids that we put out on our own. Um, it meets the state bid requirements, and, uh, utilization of cooperative agreements follows the recommendation of the State of Kansas Efficiency Audit that was conducted back in 2013, uh, which encouraged us to use cooperative agreements more. Um, you see cooperative agreements on every payables report, uh, or at least the results of them. Our office supplies are purchased through Staples, which comes from the Kansas State contract. Our computer hardware and accessories are purchased from CDW, which is on the ENI Cooperative, uh, agreement. Classroom furniture, SSI furnishings, which is on Greenbush Source Wells, Source Partners, uh, Choice Partners. And most recently, you all saw a, uh, cooperative agreement with the artificial turf field at J.C. Harmon, which was under this TIPS cooperative. Um, again, there are efficiencies, uh, and time-saving measures, uh, by using cooperative agreements. And so, um, if you have any questions about cooperatives, uh, I'm, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Uh, Wayne, this is Dr. Wayne, and I don't have a question about cooperative, but what I have a, a challenge with is I consider this, um, well, let, let me say what you just said, save your time, and, um, oftentimes you have a better cost. Now, I may have some very strong views about our community that you don't have, but the opportunities for our local, in this case, electrical companies have been cut out. You all choose not to put something to a bid for, and, and you say for time? Okay, save time, but you haven't, in my opinion, respected the local, um, electrical contractors enough to, here's an opportunity for 4.4, who knows what the cost would be? It may not be 4.4 billion. But, but that's the issue I have that, you know, and, and I'm going to say this to the board, perhaps we need to take a position as far as maybe more things need to be let out so that our metropolitan area, local contractors will have opportunities. Because I, I get input from local vendors who don't get an opportunity to do business with the district. So, you know, I, I, I am making you uncomfortable because I can see you breathing heavily, so.
I'm fine, that's okay.
In my opinion, it's, this district is, is, is exploiting, perhaps, use that term loosely, the system so that you don't have to, uh, provide opportunities for our local, our local vendors. And that is why the option, um, to say that, you know, do, and I'm talking to the board, maybe we need to step up and take a stand on behalf of our local business community because it doesn't appear, in my opinion, that you all are. So thank you.
Okay, well, we try to, we try to.
Wayne, just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, sorry, um, please respect people enough not to make assumptions about how their faces look. Please respect our people who are speaking and not make assumptions, just like we would not want assumptions made on us. Thank you.
And Dr. Yeager, I did not make an assumption. I suggested to Mr., to Wayne that I may be making him uncomfortable because I see his body language. I didn't say he was, I said he may be, so.
Well, I don't feel uncomfortable, honestly, I don't feel uncomfortable.
So now she's at ease.
But we try to keep that balance between our local vendors and the complex projects. Uh, the complex projects can take up to four months to produce and to go through the whole bid process and everything like that. And I think the decision was made on this one, that this is a complex project. And why reinvent the wheel? However, you know, we, we will make every effort to use our local vendors as we see fit, I mean, as, not as we see fit, but as, as, you know, we know that they're available. And, and this one, we did not see a local vendor other than, you know, Johnson Controls.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate you giving us additional insight into that.
Well, I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we got the one vendor, his price, but when people ask us, and we do get asked this, well, who else bid it? And it's nice if you can say, I got, we got the information from Mr. Covington. I never saw a price listed for either of the other two. So it would be nice to know the price. And as Dr. Wayne has stated, we get the complaint all the time from local vendors. At least let them up, try. I mean, you know, you want to give the appearance that it's fair, doesn't always look fair, because they'll say, well, I wanted to bid, but we didn't get a chance. So then what do you say? And then I get tired of people from Johnson County running up thanking us for giving them the business, and then the local people here, they don't get the opportunity. But it would, it just would have been nice to hear what were the other fees? And I know he added another twenty-four companies, but we never saw a price. What were they charging?
Well, I would have to obtain that from that Region Eight um, the lead agency in the bid. Uh, they don't post that on the TIPS tab. They post the bid that won. And so I can, you know, request that, but it's up to the lead agency as to whether they're going to provide it.
Okay, because I mean, we don't have it. And as a constituent, if somebody comes up and said, you're paying them for so-and-so million dollars? What did the other people? I have no idea. And then they look at us, well, aren't you on the board? You don't know? And we don't even get that information. And the information that we got, there were, I didn't see any cost. I went through it a couple of times, just trying to make sure that I had the right paper and they were giving the right information, but I didn't see it.
Well, the pricing is established, you know, maybe it's a discount from listing from Excel. Okay, so.
Well, I get that, but again, and I'm not trying to beat a horse to death. It would have been nice to know what the others were charging. Are we really getting a good deal? I mean, they made themselves look good. They gave a heck of a, you know, a presentation. But what do I compare that to? And even in my own house, I'm gonna get three or four bids, and then I want to see what's the best deal. You look at costs, you look at service, you look at, but I didn't think we got all that. We got the one company, that was it. What about others? What were they charging? So that would have been nice to know. So when people ask, well, even though you said this law uh, K KSA seventy-two, eleven fifty-one, okay, I need to be able to give them all of that. But to say there were other companies, but I couldn't tell you the cost. So this is what we were presented.
Right. And because this was already competed by another agency, we are able, under the statute, to use their pricing in in our purchase without providing the bid tabulation as you're used to seeing.
Thank you so much. Could I get a motion?
Oh, moved.
Can we second it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the district-wide LED lighting upgrade project with the Excel Energy Group.
Can I get a seconded, please? I seconded. Are there any questions? Okay, Susan, we're ready for roll call vote.
I think there's some people who look like they have some questions that may be on mute. Oh.
Susan, can we have the roll call, please?
Of course. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, no.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Valden Nguyen.
Valden Nguyen, no.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Faust, we're ready for the next one?
And I said the Kansas City Board of Education approved an agreement with Alan Gibbs and Holick Elsie for district auditing services as submitted by Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director for Business, Dennis Covington, Chief Finance Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening again, board. Uh, Tracy lost her Zoom connection. So the uh, as I mentioned when we was going through the budget, our current auditor uh, went out of business. So we had to find another auditor. Oh, Tracy's back.
I'm back. Hello.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you, Dennis. Um, good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Faust, um, Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of this operations. Um, as you're aware, Myes Hauser has completed the district audit for the past several years. Um, they've decided to no longer service municipalities. So the district needs to find a new auditing firm to conduct the annual independent independent audit and offer consultation to the district throughout the year. The finance team conducted Zoom interviews with three auditing firms. Uh, following the interviews and receiving their proposals, we recommend the board approves Alan Gibbs and Hulick, also known as AGH, for the auditing services for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. We're recommending AGH based on their knowledge of the Kansas City, Kansas School District. They have a large amount of experience with auditing other large school districts in Kansas, and their cost is very affordable. Their proposal of forty-five thousand dollars for, which contains the um, annual audit along with any um, questions or services we need throughout the year is only fifty dollars higher than we were paying Myes Hauser this past year. Are there any questions I can answer about auditing services?
Yeah, um, go ahead.
No, no, no.
No, but Ms. Wanda, you may be asking the same questions, and I was, and you probably have experience with this one.
Hmm, I'm learning. But this is Wanda Brownlee Page. With the COVID situation and the ability to get information, do they take that in consideration?
Yes, absolutely. Um, they are very willing to, you know, if we needed to do it virtually, um, typically during our auditing services, we provide all the information to them in advance, and they may be on site for up to two weeks. So if those circumstances change, we would obviously do it virtually. But um, yes, they would definitely accommodate anything we needed to to have happen there.
Thank you.
Yolanda?
Uh, my questions were around, and you you touched on them just a little bit. Why are we, why are we looking for a new auditing service again, please?
Sure. Uh, Myes Hauser has been our auditor uh, for several years, and they have decided to um, not provide auditing services to municipalities any longer.
Thank you. I I, okay.
Yeah, so every every um, school district that they serviced um, is now looking for new auditors. It is by law that we have to have an independent annual audit for grant purposes, reporting, everything else. So um, that's the reason we have to find a new firm.
Okay. And I think you've heard several conversations. We've asked, uh, like, who else did we look at? Why is this the, why did this person or this company? Why is this one being presented?
Right, yeah. We did um, receive recommendations from Myes Hauser for these three firms. Um, so we, as a service, we don't need to put it out for an official RFP. A lot of the the um, circumstances with services is it's not necessarily the large, the smallest dollar amount. But you're also looking at their knowledge and experience and and what they can offer the district. So we took the recommendations from Myes Hauser for these three auditing firms and conducted, you know, Zoom interviews and then also looked at their proposals. So we really felt like AGH um, based on their other experience with large school districts. They also audit Wichita and some other school districts in Kansas that we really felt like this was the best um, auditing firm for us. And then on top of that, their price came in really reasonable.
Okay. Can I, I have one more question, Tracy, and this is Yolanda's knowledge that she needs. Um, my experience with auditing is like with departments and our processes and so on and so forth. This audit would consist of what?
This audit is um, conducted annually. They look at um, everything from our purchasing to our payroll. Um, it's not as much as the, like, the KSDE audit looks at our September twentieth count and where we are financially to make sure that we've hit all those targets for KSDE. This really is looking at, did we meet all the criteria and compliance? Um, you know, afforded by the law. So um, they will provide information to the Board of Education, to um, a grant recipients, you know, as a grant recipient, we have to provide information to those grantors as well. So it's it's really just the independent annual audit um, that we also report back to the state.
Thank you. And again, you may have said some of it. I think I was trying to take it all in, so I appreciate you repeating.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Uh, Tracy, thank you so much for your presentation. This is Dr. Yeager. Thank you for including the other bits into our board docs because I did get a chance to look over it, and it seems like they're pretty comparable to what we had in the past. So when do, when, when are we looking for them to present? It, the information they found based on the audit, audit?
When will the um, the auditing firm present to the board?
Yes, when will the audit be done once it's chosen?
Right, yeah, it'll be um, in October, November, and then it will be presented to the board in December, as has been our past past practice.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. So may I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
May I get a motion that we approve the contract renewal for district auditing services?
Janie, Janie said it, and Yolanda seconded it.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I, my language was correct. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract renewal for district auditing services. Are there any questions? Okay, we're ready for roll call vote, Susan?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valden Nguyen.
Valden Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Faust?
And I said the Kansas City Board of Education approved the IMSE contracts and resources for the twenty twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year submitted by Dr. Kelly Charles, Executive Director of Schools, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Superintendent Faust. Tonight, I'm sharing an update on our district's implementation of the KSDE's dyslexia timeline. And I'm also here to ask that you approve the contract with the Institute of Multisensory Education so that we can begin to provide training um, to our teachers beginning this summer, specifically July thirteenth through July sixteenth. So as we begin this work, we thought it would be important to start and ground our work and thinking in unpacking the definition of dyslexia. And so we will use the International Dyslexia Association's definition because that is the definition that the KSDE is using. And basically, this definition is stating that where dyslexia is defined as a specific learning disability, it is also characterized uh, by students who have difficulties with word recognition, poor spelling and decoding, and these difficulties result from a deficit in the phonological component of language. This can contribute to problems in reading comprehension. And so as a result, dyslexia can provide a number of problems um, for students, including difficulty reading due to identifying speech sounds, spelling problems, students can have difficulty memorizing, uh, spending time on unusually long completing tasks that involve reading and writing and problems with reading comprehension. Um, in order for our district to move forward with the timeline, um, we have assembled a multidisciplinary team from various departments throughout the district. This team has been working together to plan out the next steps with training for our teachers, uh, campus staff and district level staff. And as you can see on the slide, um, we have members with Tracy Cooper, who is from um, the Curriculum and Instruction Team, uh, Tracy Smith, Instructional Coach. We have Olivia Riscovales, who's a Special Education Coordinator. We do have a school psychologist on our team, Ms. Ruth Simon, and myself and Matt Anderson um, also make up the team as well. And so here, you can see the timeline. I've actually taken this from the KSDE's guidance for their timeline for implementing dyslexia services. We are in the beginning phase. Year one is beginning and planning. Um, and then next year would be full implementation, one hundred percent. So here you can see the timeline the KSDE shared with us a few months ago. Um, if you focus in on April and May, this is exactly where our leadership team um, in district and campus leaders are. So April and May, two thousand twenty, training which covers the professional learning that's that KSDE has made available for us in addition to um, TASN and KLN as well. And so we want to be ready to begin providing PD to our teachers um, in August, as well as begin to um, implement the resource-based reading practices in August as well. So here, I've just provided a listing of the training that we have been a part of. Um, so the first three were all um, made available to us by the Kansas State Department of Education. The Science of Reading um, Training was actually on Monday, and that was put together by KSDE in Green Bush University, and we did have quite a number of staff members to attend. And then um, a day with David A. Kilpatrick, that's upcoming. Um, he is really well-known in um, the reading and dyslexia world and does a lot of work around um, reading intervention and reading difficulties. And this is going to be offered by the Kansas State Department of Education as well. And so finally, we will offer training, we would like to offer training, um, the Orton Gillingham Training, um, which you guys uh, thankfully approved for our district last year. We're ready to train um, more teachers to begin this summer. So this summer, July thirteenth through sixteenth, we have our second week of summer professional development. And so far, um, we have about thirty-nine teachers who have signed up. And so the Orton Gillingham Training has been offered in the past, um, last year, as a matter of fact. And in this training, um, we've listed all of the areas that teachers will receive training in. So everything from phonemic awareness to strategies for reading, writing, and spelling, but not just any strategies, multisensory strategies, which are really good for students um, with learning difficulties, really good for students with disabilities. This training also goes really deep into encoding and decoding, again, all of those um, concerns that students um, who struggle with reading would need support in. And if you look at the last two, um, this program actually provides assessment techniques, a variety of different assessment techniques to be able to assess how students are progressing in their daily lessons. And it is also a highly scripted program, so there are guidelines for weekly lessons as well. Um, what I like about the lessons is that they are a small group, um, and there are lessons for um, teachers to work one-to-one as well. So, excuse me, so one of the areas that I think um, this particular reading program does really well is their focus on phonemic awareness. And you'll see that phonemic awareness actually tops the um, is first in this list because students with learning disabilities like dyslexia struggle with phonemic awareness. And so when you think about phonemic awareness, it really is um, one of those standards that you're only going to see at the early learning level. So pre-K, kindergarten, first, and second. So this is where students will have an opportunity to be able to break words apart, understand the, not just how to identify the letter B, but the sound that the letter B makes, um, not just be able to see the letters E and A together, but also know that E and A together can make. E and A together can make a long E sound and a short E sound. And all of these are really important to the foundation of being able to read. And so when we have students who are at the middle and high school level, who may be struggling in this area, we want to be able to empower middle and high school teachers, is reading intervention teachers, to be able to teach this Orton Gillingham, the Orton Gillingham IMSC lesson as well. Because our traditional teachers at the third through 12th grade level, English teachers are not going to hit phonemic awareness, right? Because it's the belief that you teach that from pre-K to second. And so it is very age and level appropriate so that even kids in middle and high school don't feel as if the content may be too low or babyish, okay? So thanks to the support of our board and Superintendent USD 500, to date has trained 59 teachers. And so at the camp, at the campuses listed for you, we have either one or two teachers that have been trained. So of course, we want to be able to expand this. The goal is that by the end of the 2021 school year, so from now until the 2021 school year, we have to have our early childhood teachers trained all the way to middle school, and we'd like to be able to train middle and high school reading intervention teachers. And so here you can see, beginning July 13th through 16th, this very last bullet, we do have KCKPS, the second week of KCKPS training available for all of our teachers, even classified staff. And we are asking for approval of this tonight so that we'd be able to start the training in July, because it is a four-day training, as opposed to waiting until August because we would not want to take the teachers out of the classroom at the beginning of the school year. So our thinking was that since we had this week of training in July, that we would be able to train a core group of teachers, and then we would be able to come back later in the school year, maybe in October, early November, train another group of teachers, and then in the spring and summer, train the last group of our teachers. Any questions for me?
Dr. Charles, this is Dr. Nguyen. Two questions, please. Now, have we already used Orso Gillingham?
Yes, it was.
Orton Gillingham.
Yes, ma'am. It was approved last year, and it was actually approved before KSDE began the, began rolling out their implementation. And so I think the good folks who were in this role before I got here in curriculum saw this work coming down the pike and had already started with looking into, you know, the various programs that could be used.
So do we have documentation of, of its impact?
I would certainly be able to get that for you.
Okay. And a follow-up. The July 13th, July 16th training, now you said you would train more in October or later in the year?
Yes, ma'am. We would start with 39 of teachers who are willing to receive the training during their summer break. And then we would begin to roll the training out to our early childhood and elementary teachers. And then there's a same Orton Gillingham, but they offer training for intermediate-level teachers. So any teacher, middle school or high school teacher, that would be a reading intervention teacher so that we would be able to offer it at our middle and high schools.
So a follow-up question then, how do we cover 22,000 students being screened for dyslexia?
That is a good question. And so the good news is that we do have two years to be able to do that. And so we would begin by, I'm sorry. So we would begin prioritizing campuses based on our MTSS work, taking the guidance from our technical assistance individuals who are helping us to be able to prioritize where we would begin to start the screening.
Okay, so when you say we have two years, was there revision coming down from the state board or something?
So this year has always been the year to begin, and then with the full implementation being the beginning of next school year.
Okay, that's my understanding of the recommendations, but we can sure figure that out.
I'm sorry?
I said that was not my understanding of the legislative recommendations, but the, I'm sure the state board will let us know if, if it's not, or KSDE, whoever governs that.
Okay.
Dr. Charles, this is Janie Humphries. Will the teachers getting the training in July get professional development points?
They will get professional development points, yes.
And are they getting extra duty pay?
This is, so we, we, that is a really good question. What we did was we reached out to teachers, the coordinators actually reached out to teachers because we were not going to provide extra duty pay to get a sense of who would be willing to come during the summer and receive the training. So the teachers that have signed up are those teachers who were like, yeah, sure, I'll give a week of my summer.
Okay, now, the teachers that get trained in October, will they be getting paid for the training?
They will not get paid during the training. The training is about a five to six-hour day. So the Special Education Department, as well as HR, we would be covering the substitutes because it would happen during the school day.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if the teachers who are attending the training in October, they will not be receiving pay for going to, while they're trained, they'd have to take their own time to attend the training.
So they would not have to take their own time? They would put it in as a professional leave day?
Does that entitle them to get paid for being on that day?
Yes, ma'am, most definitely.
So they, they get paid for going to that training, but the teachers coming in July are not being paid for being, attending the training?
No, the teachers in July are not being paid for attending the training. The teachers who attend any training during the school day, that is a regular day for them. So they would receive their same pay, they would not have to take a day off in order to attend. We would just simply have them to put it in the system as professional leave so that we could then get the substitutes to their classrooms.
I hate to say that's kind of not fair. Do we have any professional development money that we can cover to make it equitable for the teachers who are attending the training in the summer?
We would be able to, yes. There would be professional development money that would be available.
Because they, you know, they are taking their time in the summer to come to the training versus being out of their classroom in October. I would, I would strongly suggest we try to figure out a way to cover that for them.
Okay.
So that it's equitable for everyone who's receiving the training.
Okay.
Just my suggestion. I think it's really good training for our teachers because I've seen, I've been in some classrooms where teachers have been using some of the methods and how it's worked with some of our children. And it's very exciting to see how, just drawing the letters and that, how it changes how a child understands.
So. I totally agree.
So it's exciting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make the motion that we approve the IMSE contract and additional resources for the 2020, 21 school year.
Let me get it seconded, please.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the IMSE contract and additional resources for the 2021 school year. Any questions? Okay, we're ready for roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Danny Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valden Nguyen.
Valden Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Jaeger.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I don't mean to harm, but can we take a five-minute break? Please.
I echo that.
I do, too.
Okay. May I get a motion, please?
I move that we take a five-minute break, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We take a five-minute break. It is 8:21. And in five minutes, we will be back at 8:26. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed. So should we put these in? I won't need them if they're, okay. Okay. Is everyone back? All board members present?
Think I'm almost, okay.
I don't see Valdenya.
You see Randy, too? I don't see the two.
There's Randy.
I'm here.
Yolanda. Wanda.
Dr. Nguyen is not here yet. Could I get a motion that we go back into our meeting, please?
I move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you.
All of us.
All right, we're now ready for the Kansas City Public Library Report.
As at the Kansas City Board of Education, accept as an informational item Kansas City Public Library's director's update on the reopening of the public library system as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
I hope I've got my report right. I'm not sure if you can see. Can you?
No, Carol, you have to click on the one you want us to see.
Which is what I did. I shared contact, content, I mean, and then, well, if I don't, I'll just go back to how I usually do that. I clicked it again, so I apologize. Anyway, you can just open up yours on your screen if you want to just follow me. It's just the statistics for the month of May. We've continued our e-community advertising through obviously Facebook, Instagram, as well as our staff recommendation posting. And at the bottom, you can see where the amount of ads we did. We had 399,100 ads, and we reached 107,680 people. The next page, we, we've signed up 255 people on new e-cards the month of May. Last year, last month, we did 629. And of course, our services in lifelong reading are Hoopla, and that is streaming audio, video, music and ebooks. We checked out 7,417 items. And of course, April was about 400 more. Yeah, but in comparison with last year, the same time, it's more than doubled. Our XS360, that's our magic wall, and that's our ebooks. We had 1,026 ebooks checked out. Canopy, that's the movies we check out, 717 for the month of May. Tumble Books, and those are just children's books, 269. Flipster is our digital magazines, and we checked out only 128 the month of May in comparison with April. This year was almost double. BookFlix is, that's an online literacy resource, and it pairs classic video stories with related nonfiction ebooks. We had 59 of those that we checked out. The next page, LifeSkill Reference, our databases, obviously, our News Bank. Views and searches, we had 5,115 views. Niche Academy, and that's a tool to create online training for staff or people that, you know, wants to do any training. It's 2,844 people search that. Then, of course, our EBSCO, that's a research database. And that's for e-journals, magazines, subscriptions, et cetera. We had 561. Obviously, Ancestry, you know that. ReferenceUSA is a business and residential database, and it's a resource for our patrons. We had 299 views. And then we check our ProQuest, that's a dissertation database. We had 142 people. Check that out. Reference Books Titles and Textbook, that's our info base, only 22. Worldbook, obviously, is an encyclopedia. We had six people. Check that out. And then we had Gale. Gale is a scholarly resources and primary resources, and we had to check out for that. The following page, obviously, is almost a duplicate. It's just a little bit extra. EBSCO is still on top. We can skip that and go to page five. The social media, and this is broken down into Facebook. We reached 437,720 people, Facebook last month, month of May. Twitter, we reached 59,291. Now, Twitter doesn't calculate how many people we've reached, just the impressions that we've, we've sent out. And of course, Instagram has not seen the same increase like the other two. The following page, obviously, is our online programming, and we have storytimes Monday through Friday at 10 o'clock every morning, every morning. And we have bilingual Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays at 10:30. And that's the day, the week of the day, the date and time, and the amount of viewers we had. Staff started with Zoom, and they began some real-time interactive programs through Zoom in May. We had seven Zoom programs, and we had 79 participants. We continue posting on our WordPress.com, and our staff share posts and videos about crafts, STEM activities for kids, videos and other things patrons can do at home. And we had about 3,736 views and 683 visitors during the month of May. So COVID testing, the South Branch Library partnered with Vibrant Health and KU Juntos to provide COVID-19 testing in their parking lot on May 6th. And there were 80 people that were tested. And then page seven, we just showed you a couple of pictures of how the library has changed a little bit with our patrons, our curbside pickup and holds we're doing. I had to show you one picture of a family that came and just had a sign for our librarians and just said librarians rock. So that was interesting. And of course, how our patrons, we have signs in the parking lot for patrons to, to get the phone number. And once they come and park, they call in and give their name and card number, and we check out their items and take it to their car. Staff, I have adopted well to curbside pickup, and all of them want to continue providing this service after we opened. We think it would serve the handicap, the hairy patron, and the very busy patrons as well. We've increased multiple take-home crafts, crafts that would have only brought in around a dozen or two participants. And now we have over 100 people come and pick up crafts for their kids to do at home. over 100 people come and pick up crafts for their kids to do at home. We have had to integrate most posts online on sites, local sites like Nextdoor, Facebook's community sub, and also the library blog to let the community know what items are coming in, what to take home, and also what virtual programs we are doing. So, you know, this is our only way that we could reach our patrons by answering reference questions by phone or emails, direct to people, and direct our people to resources, recommend books and movies, implement programs, give computer guidance, check out materials, and also, we regularly fill our little free libraries, and we're just doing so much more, much more than we did when the library just opened and people just freely came, because we had to be ready at any time and had the phones, you know, ringing, and the staff had to be there to answer. So seeing the response, in particular, to our programming blog, has made staff realize there is a whole avenue out there for us to continue serving our patrons. We will definitely continue building online programs and incorporating this component into all future programs. We proactively move more money to our Hoopla, and that's our streamlined, you know, videos, et cetera, because that's the only way that people can have, at least get the most current information. And of course, the demand is great as well. So we also increased the checkout limit to accompany the increase in use of the Hoopla and Canopy platforms. In addition, we have been seeing an increase in questions about our eCommunity resources and card signup. Readers' advisories, and that's our reference librarians busy doing that, and also, reference help is still being provided, but with a much greater emphasis on providing people with online resources rather than print stuff. Staff are owning these online skills and thinking creatively. So more time spent helping people over the phone as they attempt to navigate our website so that they can learn to do for themselves. We've also increased the Zoom version of our girls' coding class that is done through West Wanda Library, and we have Next Chapter with the Shepherd Center that we also do online, and also, writers' blogs have been conducted. Being more mindful of patrons' need at this critical time and focusing on that rather than just focusing on what we would like to offer, it has made us start to think more in depth online programming as we continue. I have reached out to UG, because we work closely, you know, and waiting on them to open, and I've, you know, and I've also asked them about the masks. They said that they encourage all people to wear masks in public. So I said, you know, we are public, so can we just use that and make it mandatory? And they told us, they don't want to say mandatory. We can if we want to, but then we have to offer, we have to offer masks. So that's going to cost us a pretty penny, because, you know, masks, you know, comes to a dollar each. So we, those are the things that we're working on to see now, because we definitely would like to see our patrons wear masks when we do open. Any questions?
No questions, Carol, but I'm going to tell you, the staff at South Branch are spoiling me with my pull into the parking pot spot pickup. I pull in, I call, and they bring all my books out. But don't do away with my hard copy books. I've got to have that book in my hand. I'm spoiled with that.
I agree with you.
But they are, they are so, so smiley and helpful, and it's a joy to see them again. I can't wait till the library's open, so I can go in.
They miss their patrons, you know, but, you know, this is just the time we live in.
So Carol, do you... Sorry.
No, I was just going to say, and the Twitter feeds are just wonderful with suggestions of movies and books, and the personal suggestions are what's really great.
I also want to just add that we're working with the communication team, because they have asked us to give, to help them with list, you know, book lists, children's pre-Ks and all that. So we've shared those things with them as well. Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
So Carol, help me understand, remember, do you have a, just as we went through this reopening, reopening with the schools, have you presented us with the reopening of the library that includes hand-washing masks, sanitizers?
No, because we will wait, remember when you guys voted, and it was until further notice, until we get, we get the green light from UG. So we were waiting for June 26, and we would have then given you now, and we haven't received that yet. So we have to bring it to you once we, once they lift it, and then, you know, we'll get.
Okay, so what's your target date to bring it to us?
The first board meeting in July.
Would, will you have opened before the first?
We wouldn't have opened yet, because the UG is moving until the 6th of July. I think they, then they will be able to tell us whether they're going to lift it or not. And by then, you know, we'll have something to have the board vote on, or at least, you know, look at.
Okay, just to suggest, you don't want to give us a plan that is, that for whatever reason may be incomplete, and then it delays you opening. So you may want to give us some preliminary thoughts, and we have a chance to input on that.
And I can, and if push, if push comes to shove, we can do, you know, something ahead of time so that we can communicate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Ms. Levers, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Oh, I appreciate Dr. Nguyen's question. I thought I had missed something, because I had the exact same question, so thank you.
Okay. We're ready for the next, which is to approve payment of bills for the public libraries?
I make a motion that we approve the payment of bills by the... Oh, sorry.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City Public Libraries as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of the bills for the public libraries. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please, Susan.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Annie Humphries.
Jamie, you on mute.
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready for the consent agenda. I need a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, this is Randy. Sorry, quick question. I'd like to pull D and E from the consent agenda, and just for clarification purposes, I thought D, we were going to speak about later.
Both D and E will need to be approved after the executive sessions.
Okay, thank you.
So may I get a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of D and E to be added on after we come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of D and E. Are there any questions? May we have a roll call vote, Susan, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Danny Humphries.
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready for the payment of the bills.
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay, approve the payment of the bills. Are there any questions? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Jamie Humphries.
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready.
Madam President.
Go ahead, Mr. Yes.
I should have brought this up when you guys were initially modifying the agenda, but we do need one additional executive session for attorney-client privilege, and I think it's more proper if we take that up while all the board members are here press and the public to amend the agenda and add that rather than once we're in the executive sessions and only send it four, four or five out.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion that we add, that we amend our agenda by adding another executive session to it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the agenda to add an executive session. Are there any questions? We're ready for roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Jamie Humphries.
Andy Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Ms. Drew, now is the time for the addition to the agenda about the dates.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I had that on another sheet to go back to. I forgot. So we, when we were going, in our last meeting, we had discussed about having another date for a budget workshop, and so we wanted to address it for today. So those of you who are working, I know that you have to look at your schedule. So could we get some submitted, suggested dates for us to come together, please, and then we'll make a decision?
Ms. Drew, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. We're only meeting once in July, and that's on the 21st.
Yes.
Do it the 14th, and that's pretty much the only, I mean, we could say from 5:00 to 7:00, two hours, and that's basically all we put on the agenda, the budget, finish up with.
Looks good to me.
Randy, thank you. Ms. Clark?
That's fine.
Could I get a motion that we will have our budget workshop date on July 4, Tuesday, July 14 at 5:00?
Can we do 4:00 or 4:30?
Oh, I thought. At 4:30, at, or 4:30 PM.
Can we do 4:00?
That's fine with me.
Can we do 4:00?
Okay, could I get a motion that we, Jamie, you have a comment?
My, my only question is, do we need to vote on the budget on the 21st? If so, are we going to wrap up our budget discussions on the 14th and be ready to vote on the 21st? On the 21st? Or do we need to have that budget workshop on the 7th?
Just... I think the 14th would be a good time so that we can just wrap up everything.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, realize you have, we haven't dealt with salaries yet, and so for us to determine those numbers, your financial people would have to go back in and plug it in, and then it has to come back to us. So I think we need an answer for the first question. What is, what is the date that has to be published, and what is the drop-dead date that it has to be finalized for the, for the preparation for, what budget meeting do we approve it? Excuse me, what board meeting do we approve it?
It was scheduled that we were going to have a special call meeting on July 28. That's when we have to approve for notice of publication.
Okay, so then we have, honestly, I think the 14th is too late for us to give, still be working numbers.
Of the 7th?
You know, honestly, you need to reserve two, but if you want the first date, I mean, the earliest possible, because we haven't looked at salaries, and we still haven't looked at a lot of the parts of that budget. But it's, I think the 14th is too late. So it depends on what people are talking about on the 7th.
We need to vote on salaries for classified, and we need to decide on the insurance.
Well, I think the 7th, I think the 7th should be okay.
Yeah, I'm good to 7.
Is that okay with you guys? Look, I'm looking down like the Brady Bunch.
Yes.
I would be okay with the 7th, and then, yes, to just do that one meeting.
Do you need a motion?
Can we do, are we doing 4:00, or are we doing 5:00?
4:00 will be wonderful for me.
And I can, that my schedule that day, I can do anytime, so you all just let me know, wherever.
4:00 on July 7.
But Mrs. Drew, realize you may not be able to limit it to one meeting. So, you know, when you say that, I'm going to counter it, just in case there's some loose ends. It has to be tight.
Okay, and I understand that. I'm suggesting one, but if we need to on July 7, we will make that decision to go into another meeting. Is that okay with you?
No, that is what is probably the best decision.
Okay.
Would it be smart for us to just hold that, the 14th? Is that what the suggestion is? That way, I mean, I'm just thinking, so we don't fill up our calendars, and if we need to cancel.
It would be smart. It probably would be smart.
And then that way, we could just cancel. I'm just thinking, so people don't fill their schedules up if needed, but.
Why, we could still make that decision on the 7th and just kind of have it in our planner.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, like, everyone hold that date, so that you don't fill up the calendar.
Okay, so could I get a motion that we will have our budget workshop on Tuesday, July the 7th?
4:00.
At 4:00 PM?
Yeah. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will have a budget workshop meeting for the school board on Tuesday, July 7 at 4:00 PM. Are there any questions? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Danny Humphries.
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for recommending that, and we will, everyone, please try to keep your calendar open for the 14th, just in case we may have to go back into that, to another workshop. So now we're ready for our executive session, and...
Madam President, we have added on there, discuss board position prior to that. Susan has updated that someone added it to at the beginning, that we discussed the board clerk position.
Greg added that.
Oh, Greg added that.
Greg added that.
Madam Chair, just in the chat, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure to let you know, and Dr. Nguyen, and Ms. Clark, that the building openings was presented to you, May 26 board meeting with the, it's the phases, and you okayed that. I didn't know it was there, but I just looked at it now and saw it was May 26 board meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure where you'd added this on the agenda, but now it's just as good.
That's fine.
The main, the main issue here is that, obviously, you've got Ms. Westfall's retiring from the district or retiring from the position as board clerk. That's a position that's filled by the board. Once she's no longer in that position, you don't really have a board clerk. You've got a assistant clerk who can cover a meeting or two, but you really should be going ahead and doing something as the board to advertise for the position and start figuring out what you want to do. I wanted it on the agenda tonight so that you weren't waiting until the meeting July 27, which is the appointment meeting, to try and figure out what you were doing. So.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I brought it up, and I just, you guys probably should not wait till the July meeting to start getting, getting the position posted.
Oh, I, I just wanted to add that I think we could, we should consider having a committee of three to screen the initial applications. And the reason why I suggest that is because any time seven, four, or more have a meeting, we have to call a special session for that. So, it may be worth our time to think about three people who could do the initial screenings, and then we could come together instead of having special meetings called every time we get together.
And just as a point of clarity, if you do a committee, because it's committee of the board, it's still subject to the Open Records, or Open Meetings Act. So, it's still a public, open meeting, you still have to give notice for it.
Thank you for that clarification, Greg.
Yeah, and so that would mean, with, if you narrowed it to three, the others would not see the full set of applications. So, I, I think we already had this tentative discussion. So, I think we, all of us should review the applications.
And so, I, I think we should consider dates for when to post it. I would say as soon as possible with a two, a two-week window.
So. A two-week window?
Okay, have we set the criteria? I saw some examples. Have we decided which ones we're going to use, or what are we going to do?
You have a current adopted position, just job description. You're certainly free to modify that job description. I think you've had some suggestions on some different ways to do that. But, you know, now's your time to, to talk about that and, and make a decision. Or if you don't want to make the decision tonight, that's fine. But again, understand that you're starting to get pressed by time.
Right. And I think Kelly, Kelly had asked for suggestions and feedback based upon those examples. But I felt that we, you know, I was fine with what the recommendations were.
I actually sent, I think, all of you guys the revised job description with the recommendations you had from me last Saturday. So, you should still have, you should have that.
And I shared with all the board members the information I picked up in Topeka. Ms. Drew asked me to send it to all of you, which included a board clerk manual and a job description last week. A couple of things that we might want to add is maybe experience with board docs. And experience in a Kansas school district. Because as I learned, there's a big difference from state to state, school districts. And maybe saying a K through 12 school districts, because community college, universities, they're all different. Those, those are just a couple of things we might consider.
The problem with saying experience with board docs, not all the districts use board docs.
No, they don't all, but that could just be, you know, how, that way they have an idea that they have, that, that, that's what we use. It doesn't seem they have to have it.
Because if, if, if we had canceled in time, we wouldn't be using board docs anymore. Because the KSB is changing that, so. But you could, you could say some generic platform.
Yeah.
I don't know the term that you could use, but some online platform, whatever.
But that, that, those are only suggestions that, that I would have right now. But, and if, and if one of the seven member, couple of seven members do not want to participate in the screening of the, of the applicants, that's fine, they don't have to. But I think it's, since we have to notice it up as a meeting anyway, Greg. We, you know, if seven of us show up, that's fine. If only four of us show up, that's fine.
Yeah, we also need to think about dates as well for that.
Yeah.
And so, I, I think it's important to post it, though, by at least Friday, because we've given ample time for her, for Kelly to give her our feedback as well as make recommendations. But I think Friday would be, it's important to get it posted as soon as possible.
What did we decide on the years of experience?
Three.
Three.
Can we say two to three?
I think two to three would be good. That gives you a little bit more flexibility, two to three years.
Is it okay for her to post it by Friday and summarize it, or to send us the final draft and have it posted by Friday?
Why don't she send us a final draft, and then we voted up or down by Thursday? And then that's still, if Friday is a drop-dead date, you were still within that time.
You're going to do a vote up or down on the job description of the post, and you have to notice up a special meeting, phone call, but.
Right, because we haven't chosen a date yet for the special meeting.
And we are having the applications mailed to, to MVP, is that correct? Did we all agree on that?
I don't think we had agreed on, on that.
I think that's a good suggestion.
So, to the attention of Karen, and I cannot pronounce Karen's last name, Greg, would that be all right?
Yeah, that's fine. If we, if you do that, let me ask you, I mean, to be able to receive them by regular mail as well as electronically.
Yeah. Would that work?
Yeah, we'll ma, we'll make it work. I'll, I'll work, if that, if that's what you want, I'll make sure that the notice that goes out has that information on it.
Okay.
What was your question again? You kind of broke up.
My, my question?
Yes.
Yeah, my question was whether you wanted people to be able to submit applications electronically or by.
Snail mail.
I wanted to make sure.
I don't know what that is.
So, how do you verify that they, that if it's sent by email, it will be open, correct? So, then do you print out? I mean, we're, we're asking for us to, it be sealed to your office and only opened when we're all together. So, how do you protect that privacy?
Karen.
I don't know, I don't know how you do it, other than just, the protection would be for not to be shared with anybody other than to the board as a whole. I mean, I, I don't know what, I don't know what you do if you're going to take it electronically. I don't know how, I don't know how you would do it electronically sealed.
Right, I don't think we're asking for it to, I, I personally don't want it to be that strict. Email is what a majority of the people use. So, I think emailing it is fine, and trust that Karen can hold that confidential information.
No, you don't trust, you just direct it to be held confidentially.
Yeah.
Right. Considering what we're dealing with, with the pandemic, we, we have to make some changes.
What's Karen's official title, Greg?
She's a legal assistant or paralegal at our office.
Okay, so she's bound by the same rules that you are.
Everyone in our law offices.
Yeah. She, yeah, so she's.
So, now let's go. I'm sorry, let's go back, and I'm sorry, Janie, for interrupting you. But if we want to look at the recommendations and then approve it, then we'll have to, as Mr. Gohin has said, we'll have to do a phone conference to be able to approve?
Yeah, if, if, if you want to make recommended changes to the job description tonight and have a final copy to review before you approve it, and you want to do that later this week, my suggestion would be to notice a special meeting at some time later this week for a phone call. It shouldn't take very long, because you're just verifying whether the changes are accurate and what you want. But that's the only way I think you could do it, because otherwise, you're going to get stuck waiting until your next meeting to, to take action.
So, what are, what are the changes as far as the recommendations for what the applicant, what the applicant will have to, the recommendation that they will have to have? Ms. Tishman has already submitted something, and we've looked at several others. So, each of us will have to look at and make some changes, then present it to at our meeting when we have that phone conference?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, I don't know how else you're going to do it.
Were the only changes, because I think the only changes were really the two, three years experience, and then.
Okay.
So, I, I guess if there are no other changes, that could we approve that tonight? Because that sounds like it's something that we wanted to, to move forward, that everyone seemed in agreement, agreement to. So, could we approve that tonight instead of holding it up?
Yeah. I, I think we also said we wanted to make sure they understood it was at least two evenings a, a month, and occasional Saturdays. Someone mentioned they wanted to make sure the person knew that.
Yeah. So, if those could be, I agree, Randy, that we could go, I, I would agree. We didn't get.
So, if that's all, can we just go ahead and approve?
Yeah.
That to have it ready and out by Friday?
Yeah.
Are you making that motion, Randy?
Yeah, I think he did. I think he did.
Make it, make it clear what the changes are so that Kelly gets them down correctly.
Right, but we, we still need to see a written copy. Because if we make a mistake and, and not, and someone hesitates, like, I didn't know that was there. I mean, can, can, you can have a written copy by tomorrow, can't you?
Are you asking, yeah, I, yeah, I, I think I've got all the changes. But if you want to send me what you're, you think the changes are, I think I got two to three years' experience, occasional weekends and evenings, experience in Kansas school districts, and experience with board docs or some other online platform. Is that what you were, I think that's summary of what you had mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let me ask a question. Are you wanting this on our online system? Because that, that typically, all the applications come in to us. So, I'm just, I'm thinking, where do you want to happen there? Because I can direct on the bottom of the job description to send directly to Greg, but people may still fill out an online application.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think you, it would be okay to list it on our website and indicate that it, it goes to Greg's office. And if some come in by happenstance, then either route it yourself or send a note to the applicant advising them to send it directly.
Okay.
And all other, Ms. Tishman, did you, did you post where our jobs are posted?
Yes, you've got it in your board library.
Okay. So, what, what publications did you also, those publications as well?
Yeah, yeah, well, as in the board library, but there are several websites that automatically pick up our postings.
Okay, so we seem to be in agreement that it's best to go ahead and vote to have the board clerk position posted?
I mean, here's the, the star does moon does.
Oh.
Just a moment. Mr. Gohin?
I, I had one more question. That is, when, when are you wanting the application deadline to close out? I think that's important, too.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
So, if it goes out on Friday, the 26th, so two weeks would be the 10th?
I need to make adjustments for the holiday weekend.
Yeah, the Monday following, two weeks.
The 13th?
Yeah.
July 13th?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So, may I get a motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve for the clerk position to be posted with the needed adjustments that were mentioned by Kelly Tishman and confirmed by the additions that she has been made to be posted on this Friday until July 13th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
This is a process question, Madam President. The, the, so, when, when we do the screenings, after we do the screenings, that's when Ms. Tishman's office will do the background checks and everything necessary in order for, for legal stuff that needs to happen. So, it'll be after we review and select our final three and all of that, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Final, no, excuse me. We'll see the final job description tomorrow?
Oh.
Correct?
I can, yeah, yes.
Yes.
And you will have a list of every place where it'll be posted?
I have, she's located, I've given you a list of all the places.
No, just put it with that application. Make sure that every place is posted, please.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you want something else, you just need to tell me.
Well, I need.
Didn't you say that it's in the board library?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, but I'll send it again, no problem.
Yes, please, with that job description, thank you.
That's fine.
We're ready for roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
ACS.
Motion passes.
Hey, just as a final piece on this, if you guys see any error in the job description tomorrow, once Kelly sends it out, let us know right away before we, we send it out for publication, so we can catch it, okay?
Hey, thank you. Okay, at this time, we are now ready to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on special education matters, which could be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act. So, I need a motion that the Kansas City Board of Education recess for 15 minutes. To recess, let's see, it is nine, let's say, 9:14, 9:12, for 15 minutes for consultation with the attorney on special education matters, which would deem privileged in the Attorney-client Privilege Act under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And we are going to return at.
9:30?
9:27.
Did you give us a three month, I mean, a three-minute?
To get there?
Here it is.
Now, some of us take longer than others to get from one to the other.
At 9:29, with no action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen.
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
ACS.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we go back into our meeting, please?
So moved. Second.
The movement and seconded that we go back into our meeting. Roll call vote, Susan, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page, Valdenia Nguyen, Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, can you? Stacy? Just a moment.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you. Could I get a motion for us to access, to recess to executive session? That Kansas City Board of Education recessed executive session at 9:32. For how many minutes? 15 minutes? For an update on the Department of Labor matters and non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The board will return, let's, at 9:47, with no action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
The movement and seconded, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy?
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Go back into our meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Answer Stacy.
Yes.
Stacy, answer.
Stacy, present.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we go into our next executive session at nine fifty-one? Uh, to recess executive session at nine fifty-one for how many minutes will we need?
Ten.
For ten minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel on the Human Resources report in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. We will return at ten oh one with potential action to follow.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Greg, did you add something?
No, we, um, potential action.
Stacy, yes.
Could you do roll call vote, please?
Uh, yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Randy, yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, thank you. Uh, we would like to have an additional five minutes um, beginning at ten oh four and coming back at ten oh nine. Did I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into, take an extra five minutes. Uh, roll call vote, please, Susan.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded that we continue on with our meeting. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. What letter are we on, Susan?
Uh, ready for D.
D. Could I get a motion that the Kansas City Board of Education recessed to executive session at ten twen- ten thirteen? Uh, for how many minutes will we need?
I don't think you're gonna need more than five for this, unless I'm mistaken.
Five minutes to discuss supplemental contracts of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The board will return at
ten.
Ten what?
Eighteen.
Ten eighteen with no action to follow.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Okay, could I take, get a motion that we go back into our meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. Are there any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew, excuse me.
Maxine Drew, Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy Egger.
Yes.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so we're now ready for E.
E.
Could I get a motion that the Kansas City Board of Education recessed to executive session uh, at, uh, ten twenty-two to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the eight privacy interests of the party involved under Kansas Open Meeting Act? The board will return at how many minutes?
Ten, ten minutes.
Ten thirty-two with no action to follow. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we go back into our session?
So moved.
Could someone second it, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume into our meeting. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Uh, motion, or Stacy Egger.
Aldean Nguyen.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we recess into executive session, discuss matters uh, excess at, um, ten thirty-five for five minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meeting Act? The board will return at ten forty with potential action to follow. Roll call, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's getting late. So, so moved.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Danny, or, uh, Lopez.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we resume in our meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy Egger.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more. Um, Susan, could you go back and give me that information because I don't have it in front of me right now?
I think if it's, I think if it's the one that I added, it would just be for attorney-client privilege. Um, and I think five minutes should be sufficient.
Okay, so, uh, that Kansas City Board of Education recessed to executive session at ten forty-four for five minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel.
Now, this, this one's attorney-client privilege.
Attorney-client privilege under the Kansas. Go ahead.
Yeah, you're fine. You, you're good. Uh, just potential action to follow.
With potential action to follow. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will recess and we will come back in five minutes at ten forty-seven with potential action to follow. Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Stacy, yes.
Randy Lopez. We're good. Motion pa-
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we resume our meeting?
So moved.
Can someone second it, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will resume our meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Stacy, yes.
Randy Lopez. Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we go into, uh, our last session, recess or executive session at ten fifty-one for five minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under the Kansas Open Meeting Act? The board will return at ten fifty-six.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded with action to follow. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call vote.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark. Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Stacy, yes.
Stacy, motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we go back into our meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. Roll call vote.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Egger.
ACS, answer, please.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're going to need an additional ten minutes, uh, starting at nine fifty-nine and then ending at eleven oh nine. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Egger.
Answer Stacy.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Now, how did you do that, Wanda? You got here before me.
You know what? I finally figured out what I was doing wrong. Thank you, Mr. Fives. He helped me out.
You're welcome.
Figured out what I was doing wrong and it worked. I thought, oh.
I'm gonna have to joke, give lessons again, man.
He's good. Mr. Birch, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, how you doing, Wanda?
Hey, I'm good.
I was trying to find my button.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
Yes, good to see you.
You too. Family doing okay?
Everybody's doing good.
When did your sister come this way? Does she come visit anytime?
Yeah, she did. She was here, actually, she was here the week that they had the, uh, turmoil up in Minneapolis, so
Oh, okay.
She happened to be here when that started kicking off and everything, so.
Oh, okay, good. So that's where she is.
Yeah, she's in St. Paul.
Oh, wow.
Right next door.
Oh, yeah, hop, skip, and a jump.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, well, tell her I said hi. It's been a long time.
I sure will. And by the way, I like that shirt too, even though I'm a Stallion.
Hey, hey, but you know the history of the Stallions. The Bulldogs started the Stallions. By graduating class.
I know, that's right.
Third went, well, we had a thousand and we lost three hundred. Hundred fifty went to Schlegel.
Hundred fifty, okay.
Because they always come to our reunion. They don't have one.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, that's a lot of that, that.
Yeah, they couldn't get them together, so we just told them, just come and celebrate with us.
There we go.
One dog, always a dog.
I was the only one in the family that broke the tradition and I still don't.
I thought you went to Wyandotte.
Uh, Schlegel, yo. Everybody went to Wyandotte. I went to Schlegel.
Nothing wrong with that.
Stallions, ain't that right, Greg?
Okay, it's time for us to get started.
I can't wade into this argument. I'm, I'm Sumner all the way on this, so.
Oh, you went to Sumner?
Yeah.
Sabers.
Okay, time for us to get started. Sorry. Could I get a motion that we resume our meeting, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Aldean Nguyen. Aldean Nguyen, yes. Stacy Egger.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, could we go ahead and have our, have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to terminate certified employee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution to terminate employee. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Aldean Nguyen. Aldean Nguyen, yes. Stacy Egger.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next one, please.
I make, I make a motion that we approve the HR report from June sixteenth, regular meeting minus lines eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three.
Second. Wait a minute, okay. Which, the HR report from?
June sixteenth.
Removing what?
Eighty, where, where you saying something?
Oh, I was just letting Susan know that this, this one is D on the agenda, but tell her which one.
Yes, D.
Eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Could we have roll call vote, please?
Yes. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Danny Humphries.
Janie Humphries, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, no.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Aldean Nguyen. Aldean Nguyen, yes. Stacy Egger.
Stacy Egger, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. I make a motion, do, Susan, did we approve E?
No, not yet.
Okay, sorry about that. I make a motion that we approve Human Resource and Recommendations E.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded where we approve Human Resources E. Uh, any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Danny Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Aldean Nguyen. Aldean Nguyen, yes. Stacy Egger.
Yeah. Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, so we are now ready for communications with Dr. Faust. If you have anything to present?
Sure, really quick. Um, I want to thank USDA for their program called Farmer to Families Food Box. The program was announced April seventeenth. It was established due to the outbreak of COVID-19. This program has been helping KC KPS families by allowing them to collect one box per car full of fresh fruits and vegetables every Friday. One of our six curbside meal pickups of locations that were included was Arrowhead, Banneker, Harmon, Rosedale, Schlegel, Wyandotte. Um, also, our Equity Series took place today at ten o'clock and um, I was a part of, um, a series that, um, there were three other superintendents that were on and so we just had a a really great candid conversation. I think there'll be more to come from that one. Also, um, we will be celebrating our staff who are retiring with, uh, retiring this year with a drive-through. with a drive-through celebration at Schlegel, excuse me, High School on Thursday starting at eleven o'clock. Come join us with your signs and show support and congratulate our retirees on their years of service. The other part is we want to thank, thank Susan. This is Susan's last official board meeting, and we want to thank her for her time that she has given to us. We are, yes, definitely hand clap. I'm gonna miss the laughs and the talks and all of the, just the running around as we would do. But I want to thank you again for all the work that you've done for us, and just know that your work will be missed. And again, just thank you, Susan, and we'll talk, you know, we have cell phone numbers. I'm sure what's going on with my throat. I think some dust in here. Yeah, but thank you so much.
You made him cry, Susan. See that? You made him cry. You brought tears out. You're getting choked up.
I'd just like to say that I was one of the persons online today for the Kansas Equity Series with the other superintendents and, and other representatives from KASB, and it was an excellent one. They're having another one on July seventh, and I'll send the information to our board members so that if you are free to be able to listen, it's very enlightening to be able to learn that. And I will also be in attendance for the retiring on Thursday. They've asked me to help out in whatever way I can, and I will do that. And just wanted to acknowledge that Dr. Eva Tucker Nevilles is going to have a drive-through, and if you just pull her up on Facebook, you will be able to see. But just wanted to say thank you to her for being here within our district for forty-four years, and just wanted to acknowledge that. Any other board members with comments?
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge that Alan King is also retiring this month.
That's right.
And that's all, folks. We're gonna miss you, Alan. You have been around here forever. And we will miss your wisdom and your Santa Claus face. Maybe if we have a Christmas party this year, we can convince you to come back dressed as Santa and surprise all of us. But Alan and Susan and Eva, we are going to miss all of you so much. Thank you for everything that you have done for our kids through the years. I've, you have been around as long as I can remember.
And likewise for all the retirees. I also listened to the equity presentation today, and a couple of things that they said that struck me. It said it's the board's responsibility to lead in equity and that they questioned whether equity... Well, I put it like this. In essence, equity has to be a core value before meaning thing. And it talked about actually that being, being the ancestor. That, that is just, it was quite interesting, and we, USDA five hundred has a, has a long way to go.
Yes. Any other comments?
I just want to say this has been a great time working with you, Susan and Alan, and I will miss you guys. I appreciate all the service that you have done. And it's just great to be able to work with you all and Eva, too. There you are down there. You know, it's just been awesome the way that you've supported a lot of the new people coming on. I was on those conference calls where you cheered them on and said, you can do it, and I'm here for you. So thank you so much for all that you've done. I really appreciate it. And as we think about equity, diversity in our, the way that we bid out contracts or look for work, maybe we do need to take a closer look at policies that, as this upcoming year, to think about what policies that we can help include that involves our local community as well as diversity within our city areas. So let's continue to have those conversations and see which policies that we can move forward with this upcoming year. I'm so excited, so thank you.
I just want to follow up. This is Yolanda. I want to follow up on the comment that, I'm following up behind Stacy, but it really was on something we voted on tonight, and Dr. Nguyen and Ms. Page spoke on it a lot, and it's just, again, keeping our community involved and how do we make sure that we are reaching out and working with vendors that are here in our community. So I'll speak for myself while my vote necessarily didn't support that tonight. I want it to be said that that is something that I definitely support for future as we are looking at our other things that we're making updates and how we need to leverage our community and bring in other people. So I just wanted to say that out loud and publicly for those that are out there.
Thank you.
And then I just, as well, Susan, you're amazing, so thank you. You're gonna be missed. We love you and thank you. And to Dr. Tucker Nevilles as well. Thank you for your service and your passion and commitment for our students. To Alan as well, man, you're awesome. I appreciate you, everything, your dedication to our students as well. So thank you for everything you've done. And to David Rand, you're a real one, man, so I appreciate you.
David.
Agreed. Nice to know.
Hey, I just wanted to, in the words of the great Roy Rogers, happy thrills to you, Eva Tucker Neville, Mr. Alan. Who else did I forget?
Susan and David Rand.
And David Rand.
Thank you. And David Rand, thank you so much. Happy thrills to you till we meet again. Appreciate you.
You should sing it, Ms. Wanda.
Hey.